February 23rd, 2016, Longmont City Council meeting to order. This is our regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley, Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a warrant.
Okay, let's stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to a list outside the chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at final call, public invited to be heard. So now we have a motion to approve the January 26th. Can you get a motion? Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move the minutes for January 26th, 2016.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent. Okay, next we have the February 9th council meetings to approve. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And just to clarify, Councilmember Finley asked, well, you weren't there at the January 26th meeting. I said, no, I wasn't, but I did watch it, the video on YouTube, so I got to see the proceedings. So, Mayor Coombs, I move the February 9th, 2016 regular session minutes.
Okay, then moved and seconded by Jeff. Let's vote.
I won't be voting because I did not.
Okay.
I was.
That's right.
I didn't watch the video.
Okay, that passes five to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent and Councilmember Finley was absent from that meeting. Valerie, are there any agenda additions?
Yes, Mayor Coombs, staff added the approval of the Boulder County Consortium of Cities 2016 Legislative Agenda to your consent agenda, item 8O, after the agenda originally went out.
Okay. Is there a report from the city manager?
No report, Mayor, council.
Okay. So now we have a proclamation designating the week of February 20th through 27th, 2016, as National Entrepreneurship Week in Longmont. And I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation designating the week of February 20th through 27th, 2016, as Entrepreneurship Application Week in Longmont, Colorado, whereas the Congress of the United States recognizes the Fourth of February as National Entrepreneurship Week, and whereas entrepreneurs are vital to the economic success of Longmont, and whereas entrepreneurs and small businesses represent 60 percent, 66 percent of the business growth in the United States since 1970, and whereas Longmont desires to become a community that welcomes, embraces, and supports entrepreneurs, and whereas dozens of volunteers and organizations in Longmont contribute to the economic health and community through tireless efforts to create startup communities in Longmont, and whereas key organizations working to promote and expand entrepreneurial activities include Startup Longmont, The Tinker Mill, Longmont Economic Development Partnership, Launch Longmont, The Longmont Compass, The Small Business Development Center, Longmont Community Foundation, Longmont Downtown Development Authority, Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce, and The Boulder County Latino Chamber of Commerce. And whereas the City of Longmont wishes to recognize these organizations and express our gratitude for their hard work to provide a culture of entrepreneurship in Longmont, now therefore I, Dennis Al Combs, Mayor, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of February 20th through the 27th, 2016, as Entrepreneurship Appreciation Week in Longmont, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize the efforts of those working in Longmont startups community. And now Sean will get up and introduce some of the people here that are here to receive the award.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, Mayor, members of council, Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. Thank you very much for the proclamation, Mayor. This was something that the, between the Longmont Economic Development Partnership and we at the city wanted to do, to really recognize all the hard work that's been going on with regard to entrepreneurship. The last two years has really been a flurry of activity when it comes to startups and entrepreneurs really being, I think, empowered and supported by each other, and I would hope by the community as well, as well as by our partner organizations in Advance Longmont. And so I want to just highlight some of those key players, and I do have a few organizations here, so we can hold our applause until all of these are read. Starting with Startup Longmont, as you know, there have been a lot of activities around that organization, including the Open Coffee Meetups, the Startup Conversations, Longmont Startup Week, Smart Cities Meetup, New Tech Meetup, and the Brown Bag Series, all of those initiated in the last couple of years and all put on by Startup Longmont. Some of the key players there are Scott Converse, Steve Elliott, Rolf Everson, Terry Gold, Jennifer Ferguson, Mike Schnotzmeier, Dixon Dick, Kurt Forrest Brewer, some board members, Shelley Coldiron, Evan Johnson, and others, Victoria Evangelista, John Rice, Dave McCurley, and Roma French. We also want to recognize Launch Longmont. As you know, that has been an enterprise in the former Times Call Building, it's really provided a home base for Startup Longmont, and also entrepreneurs provide a lot of consulting services, training, and really just a meeting space for a lot of great entrepreneurial activities. And of course, Terry Gold has really been the key person working over there in Launch Longmont, and so we want to appreciate him. The Longmont Compass has also been very instrumental in the highly successful Startup Week that occurred last year, and planning is underway for that this year again. They've also really promoted and helped to organize a lot of the meetups and various entrepreneur activities throughout the year. Key staff there include John Rice, Connor Maggar, and Laura Tripp-Greenfield. And The Tinker Mill, The Tinker Mill, as you know, is now the largest maker space, rather, in Colorado, and they've really helped to launch a number of businesses which are now growing and expanding here in Longmont and throughout the region. Keys folks with that are Scott Converse, Ron Thomas, Clint Bickmore, Mike Schnotzmeier, Dixon Dick, Shelley Coldiron, and Carl Nieman, as well as numerous board members for that as well. And also want to recognize the Community Foundation. This year, the Community Foundation, in partnership with The Tinker Mill, created a new startup fund that helps to provide, really seed money for new business ventures, and that's called the Ignite Fund. And so Eric Hozempa, who's here tonight, has been instrumental in working with The Tinker Mill and leading the effort to create that fund. And Longmont Economic Development Partnership, as well as our other Advance Longmont partnerships, obviously a lot of leading role from the EDP with regard to New Tech Meetup and sponsoring Startup Week, helping The Tinker Mill with funding and administering grants for various business startups, et cetera. And then we also want to recognize the hard work of the SBDC, the ongoing work of the Latino Chamber, as well as the Longmont Area Economic, excuse me, the Longmont Chamber of Commerce, and then Visit Longmont has even provided some funding and support. And so at this time, I'd like to invite Janine Lettingham, who is the small business staff member for the LEDP, to come up and talk a little bit about successes we've had this year.
Mayor, council members, and city, thank you very much for this proclamation and for this recognition of our very vibrant startup community here in Longmont. We had a fun celebration last night at 300 Suns, which was very appropriate, given they hosted the first startup conversations meetup. Thank you, Mayor, for reading the proclamation. Many of you were at the celebration, as well as Commissioner Gardner, and it was a lot of fun. We really have had an amazing year, and I want to be the person to give you some of the statistics around what's happened over the last year. The Tinker Mill, when I first came on board, which was last January, when I sat down with Ron to learn more about what The Tinker Mill does, learned that there were 150 members. Today, there are 340 members of The Tinker Mill. There's been $80,000 added in equipment over the last year. Local capital infused into The Tinker Mill was $100,000. They've launched two nano-degree programs thus far and are looking to add many more. They also had about 20 small business starts out of The Tinker Mill, creating 20 to 30 net new jobs in Longmont. Startup Longmont was set up as a nonprofit this year. We have over 760 members as part of our startup meetups. That's a huge, impressive number. We launched New Tech in October of this last year. We've averaged 130 people at each of those events. 50 percent of them have been from outside of the city of Longmont, giving Longmont some great, amazing exposure. We also had our first-ever Startup Week, which was a wild success. We had 1,400 attendees, 50-plus events, 90-plus speakers at 20 different venues around Longmont. The Brown Bag Series, as we mentioned, was launched, and we've averaged 20 people at each of the Brown Bag Series, covering topics including IP, cash flow, how to put together a cash flow analysis for your business, evaluation, all different topics. It's been a great asset to our startup community. And then the SBDC in partnership with the city, the Longmont EDP and the Chamber, has put in over 800 hours of one-on-one consulting with Longmont businesses, including startup businesses. Through the companies that the SBDC and the LEDP have worked with, 111 jobs were created, 117 jobs retained. There was 5.9 million in capital formation reported from those companies, over 540,000 in increased sales, and $12 million in contracts received. So, as you can see, we've had a pretty amazing year in the startup community.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to just have one more person to give comments. That is John Rice with the Longmont Compass to give a private sector perspective of some of the events and activities of the year. And then following his comments, I'd like to get a photo with the council and all of the folks that are here tonight that we recognize. We have a few plaques that we didn't give last night that will hold for the photo. But John?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is my notes. They're not very long, but I can probably talk for even longer than Janine there. Longmont's an amazing place to start a business. Geographically, obviously, we are in the heart of the innovation triangle. We're in a state that values entrepreneurship and that is attracting people from all over the United States to come live here, work here, and start businesses here. We have the fastest broadband in the entire U.S., the second fastest ISP in the world. We're undergoing massive infrastructure changes. Those of you who ever use Main Street may have noticed that. They are positive changes, despite how long you have to sit in traffic behind trains and other cars now. And we have an educated and diverse population. We have a number of, if this sounds a little fawning, it's actually true, I believe very strongly, we have an outstanding city council, outstanding city management. We have a wonderful school district with innovative policies, innovative people. Longmont, in short, is where I'd want to start a business, which is why I did. And since then, I've started three more. Sometimes it gets a little much, it can be kind of hard work, but the real story here is not just about Longmont and what it offers. It's about the people who volunteer their time, their effort, and their hard work to create the entrepreneurial ecosystem that has been so successful over this past year. And although I know they've been mentioned many, many times, and I know there's a great danger of missing one or two people, I do want to acknowledge at least a couple of those folks. In particular, Jennifer Ferguson, who I know for absolute fact, because I worked alongside her, put almost 1,000 hours of her own time as a volunteer into Startup Week. I've never met anyone who put that much time, effort, and love into an event, and I think she deserves real recognition for her amazing contribution to this community. Just very briefly, I'd also like to mention Scott Converse, who's kind of been something of a grandfather of the startup community here, Victoria Evangelista, who's organizing Startup Week this year, and the people that we know who have all been a huge asset to the community, such as Terry Gold, Kurt Brewer, Evan Johnson, Rolf Everson, Dixon Dick, many more. Who am I missing? Shelley Coldiron's right there. And I just want to say thank you to all of those people and to the organizations that have been such great contributors. As we've said, The Tinker Mill, Longmont Community Foundation, I'd like to think that my own Longmont Compass has been some small help too. I think we're 80 percent of the way to what Mayor Coombs said in his proclamation. We desire to be a community that involves and welcomes startups. I think we're getting there, and I think with the course that the LEDP is on, that the Chamber has set, that the LDDA has set, we will get there. And we will become the most desirable place in Colorado for anyone to start a business. And I think that's something we can be proud of. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Everybody can please come up for the photo, everybody that was named, and if you're a startup person yourself.
Yeah.
Okay.
You got this one, that's a match.
You guys need to be in the front dish.
You're an A girl.
You're gonna have to stay in the back row.
Make sure Sean's in it, because Sean's the reason.
What, Sean in it?
Yeah.
What a good-looking group.
Everybody look here. One, two, three.
Let's do another one quickly.
Look at you, right there.
Hey, Sean in it, come on.
See mine?
I can't see you, Joe.
That's better.
Okay, that's better. Here we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we're honored to have Don Haddad, the superintendent of St. Rain Valley School, will present an update on the school district. Welcome.
Now it's on, all right. Speaking of technology. Mayor Coombs and council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to share some thoughts with you about our schools, and I have appreciated over the years being able to give you periodic updates, both collectively as a group and then individually. And I can say without a doubt that it's very rare to find the kind of support that a school system receives from a mayor and from a council, and so we are very, very grateful. Also want to let you know that today we have with us our Board President, Bob Smith, and our Board Secretary, Debbie Lammers, and then we have Dr. Richard Porter, who's a new board member, and we have Mr. Mark Mills, and Regina Rinaldi, and Damon Brown, and Jackie Capushen, all members of our team. So, appreciate the time. I could stand up here and tell you about our schools probably for the next 10 days, because there's just so many amazing things happening for our children. And, you know, I get to visit the schools all the time, and to see what's happening in the classroom, see what the teachers are doing, the staff, the parent engagement, the business community and the connections, elected officials, really, it's kind of an all-hands-on-deck proposition that's caused our school system to be successful. And when I talk about the success, I could go on and on and on, but I'm going to focus a little bit on the future. There's an old saying, you've heard it, "If you build it, they will come." What we didn't realize is that they would come this fast. And our growth is pretty extreme at this point. We are a school district, as you know, that spans out over 411 square miles. We include Lyons, Meade, Firestone, Frederick, Decano, Erie, Nywhat, and then our largest area, obviously, is Longmont. And today, we have 32,000 students approximately. We're growing by anywhere from 800 to 1,000 students every year. So for example, this year, when we did our count, we had grown by somewhere around 800 students, but then as the year progresses, we've grown by another couple of hundred students, and that trend is going to continue. When I started as a superintendent, we were the 10th-largest school district in the state of Colorado out of 178 school districts. Today, we are the 7th-largest, and it won't be too long before we're the 6th and the 5th and so on, because our build-out plan down the road is for about 85,000 students. And what really calls that to my attention is I'm starting to lose my way driving from school to school, because the landmarks are changing. Where I used to see a field and think, okay, I know where I am, I now see houses, and I have to stop and think that I miss a turn. And I say that part jokingly, but in truth, the growth is just absolutely amazing right now. But that gives us opportunities, you know, it gives us opportunities to do a lot of wonderful things. One of the things that we've been planning on since 2008, and that's the last time that our school system passed a bond, and you were very supportive, and if you recall, it was for $189 million. And I'm very proud of our team, because we were able to achieve every promise we made to the community in terms of the projects for $189 million, and we outperformed our budget by about $25 million, and that enabled us to do so much more than the bond itself. The other thing that we've been really mindful of over the years, in fact, we've just done it again, is we've refinanced. And our most recent refinancing has saved our community about $20 million-plus dollars. And if you look at it collectively, and the cumulative impact of five refinances, it's closer to $34 million. And so we're very, very mindful of the support, and it's something that we never want to take for granted. Part of the reason we're able to do so well is because our ratings from Standard and Poor's and Moody's have both continued to increase. In fact, the most recent was with an enhanced rating, and that's a good thing, because when you start to be able to accomplish those kinds of things, it leads to even better things. One good thing leads to the next. So a lot of really good things happening, and what we're recommending to our Board of Education, and it's not something that we just woke up today and decided, it's something we've been thinking about and projecting since back in 2008, that we do need to come back and ask for another bond initiative. And we have a task force that we've put together, and it will have approximately 40 to 45 community members representative of every geographical region in our school system. There'll be parents, business leaders, teachers, elected officials, and we are going to present to you the current level of growth, what we project in the future, where we stand today, and what we think we need to do in order to continue to serve our students and our community at the highest level. What I will tell you is every single geographical part of our school system will be impacted significantly. There is growth happening everywhere. So if you think about Longmont, we'll be looking at, and I say these things tentatively because a final decision will have to be made by the Board of Education after they receive a recommendation from the Citizens Task Force. But we're going to need to increase capacity at Eagle Crest Elementary School by adding on to it, at Blue Mountain Elementary School, the Altona and the Silver Creek feeder system. In the northern part of Longmont, we're starting to experience growth, and so we're going to be looking at increasing in northern Longmont as well. We're also looking at adding safety measures to all of our elementary schools, equal to what we've already implemented with our middle schools and our high schools. And then throughout every school in Longmont, there will be enhancements and renovations such as HVAC systems, and carpets, and paint, and repairs to the ceiling, and things along those lines. And I could go through and tell you something similar about Lyons, and Meade, and Firestone and Frederick, et cetera, throughout our entire district. So if you hear that the growth is limited to one part of our district, it's just not an accurate statement. This bond would impact every part of our school receive a recommendation from the Citizens Task Force. But we're going to need to increase capacity at Eagle Crest Elementary School by adding on to it, at Blue Mountain Elementary School, the Altona and the Silver Creek feeder system. In the northern part of Longmont, we're starting to experience growth, and so we're going to be looking at increasing in northern Longmont as well. We're also looking at adding safety measures to all of our elementary schools, equal to what we've already implemented with our middle schools and our high schools. And then throughout every school in Longmont, there will be enhancements and renovations such as HVAC systems, and carpets, and paint, and repairs to the ceiling, and things along those lines. And I could go through and tell you something similar about Lyons and Meade, and Firestone and Frederick, et cetera, throughout our entire district. So if you hear that the growth is limited to one part of our district, it's just not an accurate statement. This bond would impact every part of our school system. The other thing is that's important for the public to know, and I think many do, is that a bond has nothing to do with salaries, or hiring, or any of those things. A bond is all about bricks and mortar and addressing the growth. So the three major things that we'll be looking at doing, addressing growth, addressing safety, and addressing renovation and enhancement of existing facilities. Those are the kinds of things that we're going to be looking to do if the board decides to move forward. So I'm going to stop there and ask Mr. Bob Smith to come up and share a few thoughts as well as our board president. And then if you have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them for you. I have put together a packet, and if you have an opportunity to look through that packet, you'll see lots of wonderful things about the work that our students and our teachers and our staff, everyone, and the things that we're accomplishing as an entire community. I got really excited listening to the presentation just a second ago, because the other thing that a bond would bring to Longmont is a new state-of-the-art innovation center. We have an innovation center, but we've met with the Stanford Design School, and we've met with IDO, and we've met with other industry leaders to look at a state-of-the-art innovation center where we could partner with different entities throughout our community, and it would be something that would draw national attention and provide for our students really unprecedented opportunities. So I really am going to stop at this point and let Mr. Smith come up. So thank you.
Thank you, Don, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members for allowing me to address you briefly. You know, Don, to elaborate on one point that he made, when I came on the school board a little over eight years ago, we had a net outmigration from our district. More students left St. Vrain than came into St. Vrain from other districts. Now that has been reversed. Good part of our growth, and the growth that Don talked about, is really because people are opting in, they're voting with their feet to bring their students to St. Vrain because of the kind of success that we've had. To state the obvious, that success rests on a number of factors. Not the least of which, of course, are internal, starting with excellent instruction and outstanding teachers, great building leadership, and strong administrators. And we do have quite a few folks here, we're not going to ask for a group picture, by the way. But here's the point that I would really make, and it would be this. You won't find in the United States any place where you have strong schools and you don't have strong communities, okay? Strong schools rest on strong communities, from parents who are willing to be engaged in their children's education, to leaders like yourself, to voters who, despite the fact they may not have children in the district, recognize the contribution that a strong school district makes to the economic vitality of the city. Strong schools rest on strong communities. And so we appreciate your leadership, we appreciate your support, and we thank you very much. Thank you, Bob. Yeah. What kind of question?
Just appreciate you taking the time and coming and talking to City Council. And I want to give kudos to the great event that was at Silver Creek this last weekend, the Asian Pacific Cultural Festival. It was awesome. And Carrie Adams, she was out there in the parking lot directing traffic. I think she's got a career as a traffic cop, the way she--
Oh, is that right? Excellent. Well, and also I'll invite you to the girls' and boys' basketball games Friday night at Longmont High School. Should be some good stuff, so I'd love to see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, council? Doing a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for public invited to be heard. So first on the list is Teresa Foster.
It's been a long time. My name's Teresa Foster, and I live at fourteen forty Baker Street, Apartment D. That's in Longmont. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Bond Farm Cohousing Community, which is on tonight's agenda under General Business, with the title Bond Farm Park Land Set Aside Update. First, I would like to request that City Council approve the rezoning application to allow Bond Farm Cohousing Community Development to create a forty-unit mixed-use development on this property. I also request that City Council approve the reduction in the size of the planned park from two acres to point eight-five acres. By doing so, this would release the city of Longmont from having to pay for the land, and then the two hundred and forty thousand dollars allocated for purchasing the land can be used to fund the design and development of the park. And as mentioned in council communication, the Public Works and Natural Resources staff have considered the proposed reduction, and they stated that the size at point eighty-five acres would serve the local neighborhood almost as well as a two-acre park. So I thank you for your consideration to approve the rezoning of the land parcel so that Longmont's first cohousing development can move forward. So why am I asking you to approve the rezoning? Because frankly, I have a personal interest in this. I became a member of the Bond Farm Cohousing Community last April after reading an article about it in The Times Call. I'd wanted to live in cohousing for many years and was quite excited to hear that cohousing was coming to Longmont. I have a friend who lives in Harmony Village, which is a cohousing community in Golden. I visited her many times and loved the feeling I got from being there. I was impressed that the members worked together to build the community from the ground up, including designing the look of the homes, to planning the common house, and incorporating a CSA, which is Community Supported Agriculture. I attended a house concert there and even a community dinner. Everyone was so friendly. I thought to myself, I want to live in a place like that. So that's why I'm buying into the Bond Farm Cohousing Community. I put in a lot of time attending meetings and workshops with fellow members. These workshops and meetings are a necessary part of the process to build the cohousing community. Bond Farm members have a common vision: We are working together to create a sense of community, something that we all desire, and something that was lacking in my former neighborhood in southwest Longmont. So I just want to share a little bit about the process we went through to choose our architects. We did this as a group, and we chose a talented group of architects. Is that three minutes?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, my God!
I appreciate you--
Well, anyways, I just hope that Longmont will embrace the cohousing concept and help us in manifesting a sustainable, intentional, and collaborative community in the heart of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Carter-- No, no clapping, please. Cheryl Carter Pierce.
Well, you have my name, Cheryl Carter Pierce, and I live at two-ten Judson Street in Longmont, which is already part of the Bond Farm community, existing Bond Farm community. And I moved to Longmont four years ago, and I have looked at other cohousing projects in several different states. I am very acquainted with the Bond Farm neighborhood, because I walk those streets every day with my dog. And I am very enamored of the community, the neighbors. I walk to the senior center quite often, because I'm involved in several activities there. The purpose of the cohousing community, I see it as a model for which we should all be cheering rather than perhaps fighting its existence. It is an intentional community, and by that it means that people come together, they are actually choosing to be together, they're choosing the way that they want to be governed, and they're choosing the way they want their community to look, and they're choosing to be with each other. I'm choosing to be in cohousing in addition to that, because I want to age in place. And I had already decided that I wanted to age here, spend the rest of my life here in Longmont. And I have spent time looking at various retirement communities. I have found them to be lacking on several levels, and they're quite expensive, as you all probably know. And we're all facing this issue of aging and mobility. And I live alone, and I think that the cohousing model offers something to people like me that perhaps just a normal community would not. I would know my neighbors quite well. It also would provide a way for me to do it without spending more money. The CSA that we are proposing to have there is extremely important to me because of the way I recycle, the way I believe in lowered environmental impact. It carries all of those aspects that are a requisite for me to be in community with other people. We share resources, we are looking to recycle by the CSA. We would be not packaging foods, we would be producing foods for our community, specific community, and the larger community around us. I don't know how many of you belong to CSAs, but I've done that for many years, and they're wonderful. So that's what we are hoping to do, and by keeping the additional acreage and giving the point eight-five acreage to the city, we would be using the remaining acreage dedicated to CSA usage.
Well, thank you.
So think organic food. And thank you.
Makes you healthier, too. Ellen Ohashi.
Mayor and members of the council, I'm Allen Ohashi. I'm kind of a renegade, sixteen fifty-two yellow pine from over in Boulder. And I'm here also as a representative of the National Cohousing Association, Rocky Mountain, representative on the Board of Directors, and just here to talk really in favor of the Bond Farm housing project. At one time, cohousing was kind of innovative and kind of leading-edge and kind of out there, but kind of bouldery. And it's now quite mainstream. It's just looked at as another form of collaborative or cooperative housing that I know that already exists in Longmont. And so we're just happy to have additional opportunities for housing that's a little bit more low-cost, a little bit more moderate in cost, a little bit more sustainable, and a little bit more community-minded. And so cohousing really is a great opportunity for young families, intergenerational families, as well as people who are getting older. Myself, I live in Silver Sage Village Cohousing in North Boulder, and so it's not theoretical, it's actual. All the folks back here have kind of their ideas about cohousing, and I can attest that it's a good way to live, it's a good way to share community, to share economics, and build strong communities. And I guess putting on another hat, I think the project before you is a really great one in terms of acquisition of eighty-five hundreds or point eight-five acres of land. Cohousing is all about collaboration, it's all about cooperation, it's all about getting along, it's all about public-private partnerships. And this is a great opportunity to accept this piece of property, and with the understanding that the developer is going to be developing the pertinent parking lots and the accessibility components to that. And so I think that's really a great win-win situation for the city of Longmont, not just for the city government, but also for the community itself. So I'm happy to see cohousing in Longmont, and I hope you act favorably on this annexation request. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I hate to interrupt public invited to be heard. Eleven A is talking about the park. Are we approving annexation or any plans this evening on eleven A?
Um, council--
Because I've heard several people say they want this, and I didn't read that in our packet.
Mayor and council, this is about previous annexation agreements and how that relates to the park, that then will go into the work that staff will do prior to then bringing in the zoning item to the Planning and Zoning Commission and Council. So this is about the park issue that's specifically mentioned in the annexation agreement.
Okay. So we're talking about the parks tonight in eleven A? Thank you.
Phil Reynolds?
Good evening, council members, Mayor Coombs. My name's Phil Reynolds, I'm here to speak about Colorado Care. Mayor Coombs, thank you for inviting me down today and taking time to speak with me on the phone. Same with you, Member Bonnie Finley. Hi over there. Colorado Care is on the upcoming November ballot, and I'd like Longmont to look closely at this issue. And I'd also like the council to be prepared to take a stance, and even put the website for this on the city information sheets that are sent out with the power bills, and any other ways that it can see to help Longmont people become aware of Amendment sixty-nine. That will create a statewide health care and remove corporate profit and greed out of our health care system. I believe that a state-elected board of twenty-two professionals answerable to the very Colorado people that voted them in will be able to serve our health care needs more effectively than a for-profit HMO, private insurance that's only out for profit, money, and greed. Where in Canada and England have not collected enough money to run an efficient system, many countries do. And I believe that Colorado can and will collect enough money and manage care, even surpassing our current standards by way of cutting administrative costs and waste by over five billion dollars in the first year alone. We currently pay over thirty-one billion dollars in Colorado for corporate health care insurance. That's not including the higher deductibles that happen every year. Colorado Care will offer better service with zero deductibles and run for only twenty-five billion. Yes, we need a state tax to do this awesome plan, but it will be able to be deducted on our federal taxes. And the average household that makes about fifty thousand dollars will pay about a hundred and thirty-nine dollars a month for this plan. The employers' portion will be about two hundred and seventy-eight. And health care costs for employers will actually go down from twelve point nine to about six point seven percent. The city of Longmont alone will save four point five million dollars in their first year for employees. Boulder over six million, and Denver will save a whopping fifty-seven million in the first year. My portion, as a self-employed individual, will be that ten percent that many of us have heard about already and are so afraid of. But currently under Obamacare and the Affordable Care Act, I'm required now to carry insurance premiums that cost me nineteen percent of my income. So let me tell you, ten percent sounds really good. HMOs have been sending us into financial distress every day. And you know what? We don't get the care we need. You know, even though we have insurance, because we're afraid of what the costs are to us. Colorado Care will cover us every day with no deductibles, and we may go to any doctor, any hospital, or any specialist needed. The coverage plan will be--
Okay.
And I'm going to have Ms. Hagedorn take over for me.
Sue Haggerton?
Yes, Hagedorn. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, council members, staff. I'm Sue Hagedorn, and I'm here to continue on the Colorado Care issue.
And your address, please?
Nine four one Grant.
Okay, thank you.
The coverage will be a platinum level, covering outpatient services for primary and specialty care, hospitalization, prescription drugs, eye exams, dental care, palliative care, preventative care, mental health, and substance abuse treatment, emergency and urgent care, laboratory services, long-term nursing home care, and many more things not here mentioned. This goes to every Coloradan every day, without waiting lines or bills mailed to you when you leave the hospital. And before we freak out about a twenty-five billion-dollar price tag, let's remember that we currently pay over thirty-one billion, and this thirty-one billion comes with even higher price tags, like whopping deductibles that send many of us into medical bankruptcy. In a time when health care is rising by over four percent a year, so that HMOs can spend sixty-six point one million dollars to pay their CEOs, like Stephen Hemsley of United Health, and so that hospitals can charge twenty-eight dollars for an aspirin, and overcharging by three hundred thousand for a liter of saline solution or saltwater, let's look seriously at hiring a state-elected board of twenty-two professionals-- or saltwater, let's look seriously at hiring a state-elected board of twenty-two professionals that is there for the sole purpose of bringing down costs and controlling waste. It is estimated that 80% of all Coloradans will pay a third, up to a half, less than the Colorado Care. Let's take corporate America that is only out for profit out of health care, and for the average household, this will amount to about the price of one Starbucks coffee a day. You have packets, and I encourage you to take a look at them.
Thank you. So, next up is Norma Figs.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs. Council, Norma Figs, 1340 South Broad Lane, 40 years. As a 40-year resident of Longmont, I appreciate your support and the opportunity to come before you to express my concerns about excessive noise in our community. We all have taken time from other demands to present our views and objectives to this important issue, one that affects us all. Kimberly Gibbs has gone above and beyond in her dedication to secure quiet skies for all of us. I'm grateful to her for having the fortitude and the integrity to represent a large segment of Longmont's citizens that are affected by the noise from jump planes operated by Mile High Skydiving, a for-profit business that has expressed little concern for the effect the extreme noise created by their planes circling overhead creates and disturbance to residents to the point of extreme frustration at not being able to stop it. The excessive noise that these planes create needs to be regulated. The number of daily flights needs to be regulated. The Airport Advisory Board has been remiss in not assuring that Mile High comply with rules and regs that they have largely ignored. Little regulation hasn't been imposed on this company. Many years have gone by where the city of Longmont has come out the loser as far as revenue that should have been regularly assessed and collected from this company. It has not been enforced. Ms. Gibbs and many other dedicated and concerned residents took on a heavy burden by going to court to make Mile High accountable for its actions. This legal effort was unfortunately not successful for many reasons. We are all in their debt. But where does the city and our representatives stand with acknowledging and enforcing and collecting what appears to be avoidance on the part of Mile High to pay their way? The previous airport manager ignored citizen concerns. He did not respond to our concerns, nor did he do what he was expected to do with regard to revenue due to the city for Mile High. We've been pretty much ignored through the whole process for years. As a taxpayer, I want to know how things got this far out of sync and what's being done to correct the—for lack of a better word—oversight of dollars owed the city and not paid by Mile High. How can you make the outcome for the future better? What can we do to make it better? For years, the onus has been on residents to call in or email the airport manager when incidents of excessive noise occurred. I've got drawers full of notes with dates and times of visual and audible disturbance by aircraft belonging to Mile High. If I'm typical, most folks gave up reporting because it did no good. Nothing came of the complaints. We weren't being heard. That's not fair. It's not fair to the folks who put forth money to pay for attorneys to represent all of us. My request to you, the people we voted for to represent and are concerned—I knew that was going to happen. I've got copies for all of you. Thank you.
John—sorry. John Behrens? Behrens? Yeah, Behrens. Behrens. Sorry about—that I butchered your name.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, City Council. My name is John Behrens. I live at 904 Little Leaf Court in Longmont, about a half—
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
About a half mile south of the airport. I believe the proposed new lease for Mile High Skydiving should not be approved. That business is of little or no benefits—little or no net benefit to the community, but it is Longmont's number-one noise nuisance. Mile High has proven itself a bad neighbor. They don't pay their bills on time, and they have shown no willingness to improve relations with the surrounding community. At a city council meeting two or three weeks ago, one person asked, "Why can't the opposing sides come together and compromise?" Well, the reason is that Mile High Skydiving will not give an inch. They have no interest in skydiving and not compromise. If for some reason the city council feels that they have no choice but to approve the lease, then please do not make it a 12-year lease. More and more people are moving into the area, in most cases not aware till too late how obnoxious the noise can be. The situation seems to be on course for getting worse. Make it a one-year-at-a-time lease to evaluate the annual effect on the community. I strongly urge city council to employ the one tool they have to reduce bad behavior by Mile High Skydiving. And let me emphasize, it is bad behavior when a business regularly disregards—as they certainly do—the voluntary noise abatement procedures set by the city. They also regularly exceed the neighborhood noise limits set by the city of Longmont. The one tool council has—and this is recommended by the FAA—is to charge a landing fee for excessively loud planes. That's any excessively loud planes. I would love to sit down with the city council sometimes to discuss how to affect this. At the beginning, I suggested that Mile High Skydiving has little or no net effect—no net benefit to the community. Supposedly, their being here brings people from all over the country and the world who will stay at hotels and eat at our restaurants. Well, for all the people who come to skydive, what about all the people who live in Longmont, who pay taxes here, who leave town on skydiving days to spend their money elsewhere just to get away from the noise? Thank you.
You know, this plays either for or against the speaker or just not allowed because then it intimidates people from coming up that might have an opposite view. So, that's why we have that rule. So, next up is David Cottington.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor Coombs, councilmembers and staff, for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. And I, too, am a future member of the Bond Farm Cohousing Community, which will be the first cohousing community in Longmont. And so, I just want to encourage you to support the annexation of the .85-acre piece of land. And tonight, I've heard a lot about the wonderful growth in the business community here and the very vibrant and strong school district here in Longmont. And I've also heard a little bit about some of the negative things that have happened here in Longmont with regards to the skydiving company. And I just want to say that this is a very, very vibrant community. In years past, I lived here in Longmont, and for very good reasons, I'm planning to move back. One of them is affordability and becoming part of a very vibrant cohousing community and to be a very good neighbor and to develop even stronger community here in Longmont that appears to be growing in its vibrancy and its vitality. So, I just want to say thank you very much, and we look forward to your support for the Bond Farm Cohousing Community, and we look to be very good neighbors and support the growth of this community of Longmont. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Porche. And she'll be followed by Gerald Porche.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Pull it down. Is that better? Okay. I just would ask you to please consider the council option to allow the Bond Farm developer to donate the .85 acres for our cohousing community. I also plan on being a resident there, and that's about it. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Gerald Porche?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I want to basically repeat what my wife said. I want to emphasize that the annexation is important to this project of the Bond Farm. And—I get tongue-tied up here. Basically, I'd like you to support the annexation of the .85 acres into the organization or the location. Thanks.
Thank you. Kathy Beck?
Hi. My name is Kathy Beck, and I'm the Director of the Boulder International Film Festival. And some of you may have heard, either through the paper or on websites, that we're bringing some of our films to Longmont this year. But I just wanted to come here and formally announce to the city of Longmont and to the city council that we're very pleased to be bringing some of our world-class films from the Boulder International Film Festival here to Longmont, to the Stewart Auditorium during the festival. The festival runs March 4th through the 6th. So, we're going to start here with the Friday Night Shorts program, and we're going to continue in on Saturday and Sunday with a slate of eight different film programs that we're also screening in Boulder at the same time. And these programs are going to be—shorts programs are the most popular thing that we show. They always sell out first, so we're going to bring all three of our shorts programs here this year. And then, we're just bringing another slate of fabulous films, one about Maya Angelou, made by somebody who is very close to her, one about some kids in Paraguay who build musical instruments out of dump debris and travel all over the world and open for Megadeth, if you can believe that. You're going to have to come check that out. And just some fabulous movies. So, we're really excited to be working with the Stewart Auditorium. They've been wonderful to work with, very helpful and enthusiastic and excited about us coming, so we're extremely grateful to them. And I wanted to—I brought in some programs. I'm hoping we can put some out in the lobby. I'd like to distribute one to each of you, and if you turn to page 50 in the program, you'll see the Longmont schedule there. And the tickets are already on sale, and you can get them at the Stewart Auditorium, or you can go to bif1.com/longmont and buy them online there as well. So, Stewart Auditorium will also have extended hours during that weekend for people to buy tickets, so you can kind of just show up and get tickets on-site as well. So, we also are holding a reception on Friday that you all have been invited to, along with a lot of other arts organizations in the community have been invited to attend. We've got some great sponsors from some local restaurants here, The Roost and Good Bird Kitchen and Left Hand Brewing Company. We're going to have some great music, and it'll be a nice opening. I hope you guys are all able to make it. And just want to say that Longmont is—really has a reputation for a very strong arts community, and we could not be happier to be bringing these films and hopefully joining that community here in Longmont, and we're just very excited about it. We hope to see everybody at the festival, March 4th through the 6th. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Barbara Graves?
Hello. I'm speaking on Bond Farm as well. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. We moved from—
So, just first off, start by stating your name and address for the record, please?
Barbara Graves, and I live at 1626 Centaur Circle, Lafayette. We moved from Maine to—we tried to move to Longmont. The flood happened as we were camping in Estes Park and looking for houses in Longmont. So, you all know, there was not housing here then. So, our son-in-law lent us his house for two months, and we got to enjoy Longmont then, but were not able to find a house. So, we're looking forward to being able to move into the Bond Farm community and finally get to the place that we wanted to. Most of our community right now is folks within 10 years of my own age, but we're hoping that families will move in, too. We want it to be an intergenerational community, and the park is a very important part of that. We want to see children running in our community and coming to our community from the greater community. I think all of us are very civic-minded, and if you looked at our bios, you would find that we contributed to communities in other places and other times. I, myself, is a teacher, and I'm hoping to work in the schools here as a volunteer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Graves?
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is John Graves, and I live at 1626 Centaur Circle in Lafayette. I've been looking at your sign over the mayor, and I feel that I belong in Longmont. We are attempting to build a community in Longmont called Bond Farm Cohousing Community, and one of the first things that we need to do in an effort to prepare the way for us is to resolve the issue of the annexation of the park to the city of Longmont. And so, what I'm urging you to do tonight is to support the issue, to accept the .85 acres that will be part of the park, and also to urge you to use the monies that you have set aside at this point so that the park can be built out and can actually be used by the community. We know that there are—that the problems of gathering together the money to build a park and acquire the land are very difficult. So, we're thinking that this will provide you with an opportunity, not only to acquire the land at no cost, since we're donating it—we would be donating it to the city, but also use the funds that you currently have to build the park out and provide a resource for this community, which we also, too, wish to become part of. So, for that reason, I'm urging you to accept the proposal from the developer so that we can begin to clear the way, to do the additional work that we need for obtaining the necessary planning permissions to go ahead and establish our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul Hildebrand?
Paul Hildebrand, 1401st Avenue here in Longmont. Good to see you all again. I guess I'm part of the zeroeth cohousing community in Longmont because we did that one kind of next door to the Bond Farm that you all probably know about. And we had to go through this same kind of development process. And then, we also thought about what was going to happen to the Bond Farm. And maybe you don't recall that we tried to do a special improvement district, a taxation district for that part of—for that neighborhood, to see if we could buy the land as a park, all six acres. And the city council kind of made a deal with us because it was contentious. And they said, "Well, we're going to set aside some money in the budget, $240,000, to buy two acres for a smaller park." And that was a compromise. And so is this. And I'm actually in favor of it. And, boy, I'll tell you, going through the development process, I think if anybody's done it, they know that it's pretty brutal. I kind of think the only people that—we—you know, the only reason a person would become a developer is because they've got—to leverage all that pain from the first time, and then they decide to turn into a profession. So, my heart goes out to Peter Spalding. He's here tonight, and he's been doing a really great job of working with the community. And I think it's a win-win situation all the way around. One thing I'd say to all of the—our new neighbors that are moving in, come get to know us a little bit better. I think—the reason that you hear so many people complaining about it is they don't really understand what you're doing. really understand what you're doing. But I think saving 42% of the land for agricultural and recreational uses is a pretty good deal. You know, it could have been filled up with McMansions. And so, once again, it really is a great place to live. It's an honor to live in Longmont and a pleasure, and I'm thanking all of you for working together and making it ever better.
Thanks. Thank you, Paul.
My name is Janet Bycheck, and I live at 1720 Grape Ave. in Boulder. Thank you for allowing me to share about our Bond Farm Cohousing Project. We hope to be a great asset to the greater community. We have been planning this community for about three years now and are very excited about creating a community where we can grow and grow old together. The creation of a farm-to-table model is becoming more popular as the movement to localize food grows. We hope to create a CSA, a community-supported agriculture, that the greater neighborhood will benefit from as well. If Longmont decides to support the annexation of this .85 acre for a park that we're offering and use the money to develop it, we will use the rest of the land to grow more food for the greater community as well as for ourselves. The agri-hood model is growing all around the country. Developers are looking toward this model as new neighborhoods are being created. As a community, we are also very committed to net-zero energy use, and our land will allow us to maximize passive solar power and permaculture toward these goals. We're very excited about all the opportunities this cohousing community offers us and the greater community, living more affordably by sharing resources and growing food and being able to offer the community a live-work model where people can work close to their homes and reduce commutes. I'm very excited and very much looking forward to living in this community and also living in the greater community of Longmont, sharing an affordable and rich lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you. And he'll be followed by Ruth Thompson.
Good evening, Miguel Hornito, 1720 Grape Ave., Mr. Mayor, council members. I also am a member of the Bond Farm Cohousing Community, and what has excited me about joining that community is that it's an intentional community. I don't know about your experience, but my experience has been that often people go to their houses, they drive into their garages, they shut the garages, and there they are. They basically stay in their houses. That's often happened to me, but of course, there are other ways of forming a community, being a member of church. I was, you know, there was a community with my kids being on soccer and those teams. There was a lot of community there. But this is an intentional community, and that's something I really like and something I'm really looking forward to. I've already gotten to know a lot of my neighbors, ones that are going to be in community with. I've worked with them in workshops. We've already set up a form of governance, which is a modified form of consensus. So I've gotten to know my neighbors, my neighbors-to-be, and I like them, and we're forming community already. And the thing about it is that this is the way I want to live. I want to live in community. I want to live with people that I want to be able to grow food with, okay? And so that is something I'm looking forward to. I'm looking forward to moving to Longmont. And, you know, Bond Farm cohousing community belongs in Longmont. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Coombs and council members. My name is Ruth Thompson. I live at 4128 Prairie Fire Circle in Longmont. I'm here to support the Bond Farm Cohousing Community and its rezoning. I lived at an island for 10 years, and while I was there, I learned that everyone in that community was there for a different reason. My reasons center on the people. I found that everyone had things to share, and that cohousing was a wonderful way to facilitate that. People taught classes, borrowed tools, made gifts together, babysat neighbors' children, visited neighbors' elderly parents, worked on their cars together, cooked and ate together, shared experiences and life events. One of the things that can really help that happen is that because we're planning our community, we can plan spaces where people can gather and meet and interact. And so I support the city accepting the .5 acres that would be donated to the city and ask that you use the money that was earmarked to purchase that land instead to develop it so that we can have some places in the park to gather and meet and meet with our neighbors in the bigger community and have community events. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I know I probably butchered that first name, but--
I'm Devita Byrd from 4128 Prairie Fire Circle. I'm here to support the Bond Farm Cohousing because, like my mom who just spoke, I think that the sense of community and the just togetherness and sharing of everything would be really amazing, and the -- just like how people would mentor everyone, and I'm excited to learn just the skills the rest of my neighbors or prospective neighbors-to-be have. And I think that the park with the .85 acre park would be a really nice addition for everyone, because like with me growing up, I loved parks, and I think pretty much everyone does. So a really nice park would be really nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of the City Council. My name is Kathleen Thompson. I live at 2727 Nelson Road, Apartment Q106. I too am here to urge you to take the necessary actions so that the Bond Farm Cohousing Project can progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council people. I'm Sandra Locke. I live at 6339 Laodisia in Longmont. I'm here on behalf of Quiet Skies. It's a very loud noise, and it's very disturbing, and I look forward to the bad weather so that they're not flying. I garden. I enjoy my peace and quiet, which has gone away on the weekends, and I'm dreading this Saturday. And I hope you do not consider a 12-year lease. Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, City Council staff. My name is Scott Stewart, 229 Grant Street, Bond Farm neighborhood. Not here for that, though. I'm here about the -- probably see these. These are reasonable signs that we put up in our community. It's basically no cruising, no engine brakes, mufflers required for trucks. It's reasonable to try to limit what is disturbance to some. Now granted, not everybody in the community is disturbed by engine brakes. I'd say less than 99% are, and not everybody's disturbed by cruising, yet Mile High is kind of what I'm here for. Both of these are issues that are unwanted problems in our community. One involves repetitive behavior; the other is a noise issue. Mile High affects some members of our community in both ways. Not everyone is affected by the jump planes much -- not everyone is affected by the jump planes, much in the same way not everyone is affected by cruising or the engine brakes. It's obvious operations at Mile High have changed over the years. To some, the changes are positive; to others, Mile High has a negative impact on their lives, so much so that they've been willing to stick their necks out and use the courts to try to recapture control over their own personal property. The lease that is before you for review is an opportunity to address the problems that exist with the way business is being conducted by Mile High. There are those who believe that complainers should just move. I agree movement should happen. The planes should move along, stop buzzing in circles over our homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Marilyn Hughes, 1126 Fourth Ave. First, I want to thank you for approving a pay-as-you-throw trash program and beginning a curbside composting, in which I plan to opt in and hope many others will too. But in addition, I'm here to talk about two bills in the state legislature that I feel like affect Longmont. I would like to encourage council to oppose House Bill 16-1181, which once again is being introduced after failing in 2015. This bill would require municipalities to be liable for loss of mineral rights where a community has enacted a fracking ban. I feel this is a bill primarily to intimidate communities and discourage efforts to have a local say in where fracking wells are sited. I would also like to see council support Senate bill being introduced by our Senator Matt Jones, Senate Bill 16129. It will be heard in Senate State Affairs March 2nd and would require a more neutral administration by the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission with respect to its job of oversight of oil and gas operations. And I feel like this would be a very useful bill to see passed for Longmont. Thank you very much, and thank you for composting.
Thank you. I'm going to opt in too.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Kelly Mahoney, 708 Bluegrass Drive, 80503. So the Mile High lease is back in your hands, and I hope in the last month you really got to review it and see all the holes that need patched up prior to approval. All of my comments from January 26th still stand, and here's a reminder of a few of them. So first, there's no date in the contract for when the first payment is due. When will Mile High be required to pay the prorated fee covering October 2015 through March 2016? It would be prudent to add penalties into the payment structure. Second, have you confirmed that Mile High has supplied all required insurance documents to the airport manager? And finally, this lease does nothing for noise mitigation, so your job of protecting citizens is not complete when this is signed. I also want to bring up the drop zone permit. Now hopefully, we all understand that the lease that everyone is talking about does not cover the 40 acres of land used as Mile High's drop zone. The drop zone is covered under City Code 4.64040. On January 26th, I inquired whether Mile High paid for the annual permit yet for using those 40 acres of public land. It was only after my inquiry that city staff created the invoice and sent it out to Mile High. And as of the beginning of February, Mile High still hadn't paid for the annual permit. One would think that after all the missed payments and late payments, council and city staff would be all on top of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Eileen Carpenter, and I represent myself and my husband, Dean Carpenter. Our address is 6815 Camelia Court, Niwak, Colorado. We've lived at this address since 1983, so that would be 33 years. When Dean and I looked at our home before purchasing, we located how close we were to both the Boulder and Longmont airports. We agreed that we were far enough away from both airports and would not have to be concerned about excessive noise from either location, and we were right for about 28 years. Over the last five years, things have changed. At first, we grew concerned about the skydiving plane noise. It was annoying, but did not happen all the time, so we could deal with it. Then there was more skydiving planes and more noise at our home. We filed complaints, let people know of the issue, and waited to see when the noise problem was going to be addressed. Nothing. A lawsuit came and went, the judge was duped, nothing was done to address the real issue, which is noise pollution. Our concern is changing. It is turning into frustration. We used to enjoy an early morning cup of coffee on the weekends in our quiet backyard. Now it is likely that the sound of World War II bombing runs will chase us inside. You've heard many people talk about the excessive noise. My husband has to wear headphones with music on when working around the yard while the planes fly. We plan trips to get out of the area, and we don't have people over during the day for outdoor parties, and during our homeowners' meetings in the park, we often have to wait to continue conversations. Lately, I've started hearing my friends at work say, "Isn't there a big noise issue in Longmont?" Our growing concern is that quality of -- our quality of life is being diminished significantly by a single business. We love where we live, and after 33 years, we don't feel like we should be forced to move because of unregulated noise pollution. Many people have worked hard on this cause. It seems crazy that people who are greatly affected have to give up so much of their time and money to try to bring about a positive change. We are not asking you to drive Mile High's skydiving out of business. We are just asking you to reduce their flights to a more acceptable level that allows some quiet time for residents within the designated flight box. I am asking you to please renegotiate a lease that limits the amount of skydiving flights per day and forces Mile High to use quieter planes. Thank you for listening.
Ron Krenzel, 1291 North 61st, Longmont, Colorado. Well, here we are again, the same story about the people that can't live with airplanes in the sky. It's been litigated, it's been discussed. You all know far more about the legal ramifications that have been going on than the people that spoke tonight and will speak later on. Kimberly Gibbs certainly understands that the FAA is in control of the air, not you, the City Council. You also know that what's been spoken about the leases is not the truth. It's what came out in the paper. And why people are digging into this, I have no idea. Well, I do have an idea. You know that Quiet Skies is actively pursuing a national campaign to discredit general aviation and aviation in general. There is no reason whatsoever not to approve the leases before you tonight, on first reading I was wrong the last time I spoke here. I said there were 97,000 people or 96,000 people in the City of Longmont. There's 150,000 or more that don't complain about Mile High's skydiving or the Longmont Airport. The few people that continue to do this who've lost in court, who've lost in public opinion, that's their opinion. I guess they can be it. I've spoken to you before about what I think they may -- they probably have a hearing disorder of some sort. It's a population that's probably significantly small to be considered. But what's more important and what I'd like to focus on for a moment tonight is how we can regain the energy-- can regain the, the energy of the Longmont Airport. Quiet Skies has hurt us a lot, they really have. They've, they've put a couple people on the council, they continue to have the ear of the, of the local paper, and I think when you see this summer, when we have the Airport Expo Day, or whatever it's going to be called, I think it's a great opportunity for us all to, to regain some energy at the airport and stop listening to this very small negative portion of people who have focused on Mile High skydiving with a, in the case of Kimberly Gibbs, has a much greater mission to, to diminish general aviation and aviation in total. So I hope we have a really good summer, and I hope you as the city council really get behind the, the expo at the airport, and I think they need a little more money too. Thanks.
Thank you. Susan Webel?
It's Suzanne Webel, 5735 Prospect Road, Longmont. Good evening. It's so great to learn about the new initiatives that are going on in Longmont and to hear people's enthusiasm about their community. It's great to hear about the entrepreneurs, and it's great to hear about the school district, and it's even great to hear about the cohousing and the crop shares and all that. Those people must live and work in downtown Longmont or parts east or north of town, but they don't live on the south and west sides of town. There are a lot of those of us who do live there, and we too would normally be enthusiastic and happy Longmonters, but we can't be. And we're not just being malcontents and complainers, and it's not just about Kim Gibbs, and it's not just about Citizens for Quiet Skies, it's about everybody. Our daily lives are being ruined by something that you can control, the terms of Mile High Skydiving's lease at Vance Brand Airport. You sent the lease back to the airport manager and the airport advisory board, which are, no surprise, recommending its approval. That's kind of like asking the fox to guard the chicken coop, don't you think? You could insist that Mile High modify its behavior, you could insist that their lease be shortened, you could insist that they pay the rent, you could impose a landing fee on excessively noisy aircraft, or don't renew their lease. It's up to you to help us all have a quality of life as citizens of Longmont. Thank you.
Ray Bovet?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Ray Bovet. I live at 5735 Prospect Road, and I also want to talk to you about the airplane noise, not airplane noise in general, specifically the jump plane noise. This has been a really interesting council meeting. I was really excited to hear about all the entrepreneurial awareness events going on in Longmont. This is the Longmont that we know and that we love, and this is the Longmont we want to encourage and build. Personally, as a member of the high-tech community working in Longmont, I'm somewhat concerned about the negative quality of life issue which this unceasing noise, particularly in the summertime, the times when people really want to be outside, represents. It's not just five minutes a day, it's all day, all weekend, every day, on and on and on. You can't get away from it, it's just there. I think that it's one of the major issues that Longmont has to deal with in order to continue moving forward in having the economic growth and the vibrant community that we want to have. I think you've heard a lot of different suggestions about things you can do, actions you can take that are not in violation of FAA regulations that would help with this, and I strongly urge you to do them. Thank you.
Jared Johnson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Jared Johnson, I live at 401 Interlochen Boulevard in Broome Field, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Bond Farm Cohousing Community that I recently became a member of. My son and his family live in Longmont, and I like to come here and walk my grandson to the Fall River Elementary School. And I won't try to, I won't try to repeat what you've heard already. I'm an environmental engineer, and I'm extremely interested in the stewardship of land and water. And I can't think of a better way, a better use for that land at Bond Farm than what this community is, is planning to do, especially given the collaboration leading to the city park that you're considering tonight. And I suggest to you that supporting local agriculture is a great way to plan for intelligent growth rather than uncontrolled sprawl. And the key, key word for me again is stewardship. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kimberly Gibbs?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. My name is Kimberly Gibbs, I live at 7468 Mount Sherman Road in Gunbarrel. We were all here just recently talking about the lease. Several of our supporters are not speaking tonight, but they're here. I would like to ask again, just like last time, those who are here who do support regulations of the skydiving operation, if you could just stand briefly? Last Saturday, I rode bikes from my home in Gunbarrel over to Niwot to have lunch. I love, I love the extensive trail system in Boulder County, and I spend hours on it every week. And as we approached Niwot, it got louder and louder and louder, and pretty soon, there wasn't just one jump plane, it was two jump planes. My friend looked at me and said, "Boy, Mile High's really stinking it up today, aren't they?" And I had to agree, it sounds like a war zone there. We live in Gunbarrel, but we have rental property in Niwot, and our tenants have to, to deal with that. The noise from this one company is outrageous, it's excessive, and it is degrading the quality of life in North Boulder County, every Saturday and Sunday during the warm weather months, 12 hours a day. The last time I was here, I promised to work on a letter from Congressman Polis, and we've been in ongoing communications about that, a letter that would clarify your authority. And I do appreciate and understand the difficult position that you're in, I do. But you are leaders of the community, and we are asking you to lead. You've heard several great suggestions, landing fees, limited hours of operation, changing it to a one-year lease. Let me get back to the conversations with Congressman Polis's staff, and he's been very supportive of our efforts. The scope has changed a little bit, and instead of the letter, he is proposing to help facilitate negotiations between the city of Longmont and the FAA, similar to the process that was undertaken at Orange County, California. You will be receiving this invitation soon. I urge you to eagerly accept this offer of help to, to achieve regulations. Something has to be done, okay? And the problem is not with Quiet Skies. Quiet Skies, what was that quote? Quiet Skies has hurt us a lot, no. Mile High Skydiving is hurting us a lot. I urge you to do something about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, that's the end of First Call Public Invited to Be Heard, since, we've been here since about 5:15. Why don't we take a 10-minute break? Why don't we take a 10-minute break?
Did you tell them that I was going to be late?
Yeah.
That's why you don't have pizza.
We're to the consent agenda.
Mayor Coombs, the first item on consent is ordinance 2016-09, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance Ram Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel 11SD to Mile High Aviation Center LLC. Public hearing and first reading scheduled for March 15th. Item 8B is ordinance 2016-12, an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance Ram Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H21 to David A. King. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 15th. Item 8C is ordinance 2016-13, a bill for an administrative ordinance approving the Willow River Properties LLC contract to buy and sell real estate for the conveyance of 103 Main Street to Willow River Properties. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 15th. Item 8D is ordinance 2016-14, designating the Christopher Copeland House at 208 Fifth Avenue as a local historic landmark. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 15th. Item 9E is ordinance 2016-15, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2016. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 15th. Item 8F is Resolution 2016-17, authorizing the transfer of a portion of the balance of the Park Improvement Fund to the Parks Grants and Donations Fund. Item 8G is Resolution 2016-18, granting conditional consent to the Boulder County's purchase of land parcels in the Longmont Planning Area known as the Tice Property for open space purchases. Item 8H is Resolution 2016-19, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for its commercial energy services outreach program. Item 8I is Resolution 2016-20, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for youth core program services in 2016. Item 8J is Resolution 2016-21, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county of Boulder for its childcare services programs. Item 8K is 2016-22, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado Department of Transportation for a high-visibility DUI enforcement grant. Item 8L is Resolution 2016-23, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado Department of Transportation for a law enforcement assistance funding grant to address impaired driving. Item 8M is the Boulder County Collaborative Flood Recovery Resolutions. The first one is Resolutions 2016-24, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for CDBGDR funding for flood recovery. And the second one is Resolution 2016-25, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the town of Lyons for CDBGDR funding for flood recovery. Item 8N is legislative update requesting positions on bills to oppose Senate Bill 16069, oppose Senate Bill 16037, oppose House Bill 161181, oppose Senate Bill 1611, and oppose Senate Bill 16123. And item 8O is to approve the Boulder County Consortium of Cities 2016 Legislative Agenda. And staff would like to pull item 8A for a short presentation.
Council members Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. If there are no others, council members, I move the consent agenda minus 8A.
Second.
Okay. Let's vote on that. And that passes seven to zero. We shall also note that Brian Bagley has joined the meeting.
Mayor Coombs, your first item under number nine, which is second reading and public hearing, is item 9A, ordinance 2016-11, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Bowes Annexation, generally located south of Nelson Road and east of Airport Road, and zoning the property PUDR. And we do not have a formal staff presentation on this item, but we do have staff present to address questions.
Okay, if there's no questions from council, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on ordinance 2016-11. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2016-11. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move passage of ordinance 2016-11.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the post-award public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Resiliency Planning Grant. And Erin Fostick has a short presentation on this item.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. Erin Fostick with the Planning and Development Services Division, Department and Division. In 2014, the city was awarded one of the first Phase One Grants for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Resilience Planning Grants in the amount of $100,000. The grant was awarded for us to look at resiliency within our comprehensive plan and look at resiliency as it relates to Longmont's housing stock, particularly mobile homes. Staff has worked on this grant throughout 2015 and are actually getting ready to close out this grant in the next several weeks, and we'll be working with DOLA on that. One aspect of our closeout does require us to hold a public hearing to provide opportunity for public comment on this grant, and that is the purpose of the agenda item tonight. So I wanted to provide just a brief overview of this grant and answer any questions that you might have. So the majority of the grant, 75%, were spent to help us integrate resiliency into the comprehensive plan. We identified this early on as a strategic opportunity to coincide with the Envision Longmont update that we're working on to update and integrate the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan and Multimodal Transportation Plan. In addition to the financial resources that were provided as part of this grant, we were able to take advantage of technical expertise through the Department of Local Affairs, who's been doing a lot of work on resiliency in the state. Also through our project team and partners, we've consulted with other groups working on resiliency efforts locally, as well as within our organization, to really ensure consistency between these efforts. So the resulting approach and what we've really done with this grant and with the larger Envision process is to incorporate resiliency throughout the Envision Longmont Plan. And I know we've talked with you quite a bit about this, so this isn't news to you, but we did want to mention it again in the context of this grant. So you'll see resiliency woven throughout the draft plan framework, including the goals, policies, and ultimately the strategies and metrics that we're working on. The plan really does support the incredible work that's going on in our community and uses the definition of resiliency. And we talked about this a little bit at your retreat. So in the plan, we are working on incorporating resiliency. We are defining resiliency as increasing the capability of the city and its partners to anticipate risk, limit impact, and bounce back rapidly through surviving, adapting, and learning in the face of disruptive shocks and stresses, whether environmental, economic, or otherwise. So taken together, the plan's goals, policies, and overall vision will really help to promote a more resilient Longmont. As you know, the full Envision Longmont Plan will be, a draft will be released next month, and we look forward to council approving this plan later this summer, but the grant, this aspect of the grant will close out prior to that. The other aspect of this grant really looked at how we incorporate resilient standards into our housing stock. Again, for this portion of the grant, we were specifically looking at our mobile home stock. A consultant team was hired using these grant funds to evaluate options related to mobile home code updates. We produced an existing inventory, as well as a condition survey, looking at the city's current mobile home stock. We're in the process of evaluating the final recommendations, and we'll be bringing this item back to council in the next several weeks for information and then your consideration. So that really concludes my remarks on this grant. I'd be happy to take any questions prior to you opening the public hearing.
Councilmember Christensen.
Erin, I know that when we redo the river corridor, we'll be losing about five, I think five mobile homes across from Left Hand Brewery because we'll be straightening out the river a little bit. Is that going to be reflected in this survey that you've done?
You know, I haven't seen the specific results of the survey. I know Joni has it on the agenda in the next several weeks, so we can definitely speak more specifically to certain properties that we're looking at.
And I think if, you know, on that issue, one of the things that we're constantly looking at in the design is to minimize the impact. And so based on the final design work there, you know, it may or may not include that number.
Can you turn your mic on, please?
All right. We're not sure how many mobile home spaces will actually be lost right now, are we?
I think generally we're saying there's a potential for around five, but again, you have to get into the final design phase of this to really make that determination and what that's going to look like. What I can say is that on that issue, we are working with Kathy in the Community Services Department, as we did in the Royal Mobile Home Park area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions from council, I'll open up the public hearing on this item. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this grant? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Now we're, the consent agenda items removed.
Yes, and that item removed was the Vance Ram Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel 11SD, and David Slater will make a presentation on that.
Mayor, member of council, I'm David Slater, your airport manager on 229 Airport Road. The lease before you is a lease that is set up to replace the old existing lease. The original lease was negotiated in 2007. Within that lease, it contained language that effectively did not require payment until a grading permit was issued. The city recently, in the past few years, realized this provision may cause the city to be noncompliant with FAA grant assurances. And of course, during that time, the city did self-report to the FAA, and the FAA agreed that it was likely noncompliant and directed the city resolve the issue. So the city began negotiations with Mile High at the direction of council. The resolution to this is the leases before you was to agree on a lease that would remove the language that was potentially violating grant assurances, excuse me, within the lease itself. Some of the key points to the new lease that you may see is that we reduce the lease parcel area to the area that's being used for its intended purpose. Part of the reason that we did this during the negotiation was that, and previously it was 180,723 square feet, and we reduced it to 12,780 square feet. Part of the reason we did this is that it was indicated that Mile High was not ready to pursue the large facility that would combine all their operations into one, therefore they did not need that much property. The FAA doesn't allow what they commonly refer to as land banking. And basically what that is, is that they require you to have an immediate demonstrable need for the area that's going to be used so that you don't violate Grant Assurance 23, which talks about exclusive rights, or you can't grant exclusive rights to any particular individual. And that can also be referenced in FAA Order 5190.6B in Chapter 8. It talks about having to have an immediate demonstrable need for the amount of property that you have. So that was the purpose in reducing the land parcel size. The lease that you have before you does require payment on the lease and only allows the remainder of the original term of the old lease, which at this point is 12 years out. It also requires the current rate to apply, and what I mean by that is previously the old rate that in 2007 was .2730 cents per square feet. The current market rate is .3527 cents per square feet, so they would be charged the current market rate on the remaining of that term. Just to recap, the previous agreement did not allow for revenue to be collected, whereas the newest, new agreement does require the revenue to be collected.
Are you ready for questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any councilmember, Peck?
David, thank you for that update. I do have several questions, actually, and before we vote, I have a couple of friendly amendments to this, to this lease. I would like you to explain the .35 cents per square foot versus the current rate that the S, what is it called, the LBED says for commercial space is $2 minimum a square foot. Why is it less on the airport lease than it is for the market value of commercial real estate?
So the airport market rate is significantly different because of a different type of usage, and that's typical among all airports that I've ever encountered or experienced. You will not pay the same rate as you would outside the airport fence. However, if you do have a business that happened to locate within the airport property that was non-aeronautical, then we would have to charge a higher rate that is fair market value outside the airport fence.
So if Frank had actually built his restaurant where he wanted it, then the restaurant itself would have been charged the market value?
That's the FAA's requirement, yes. We do have to charge a different market value for non-aeronautical purposes.
Okay. The other thing that I want to know is, why don't we have a late payment charge, like if they're 30 days overdue? if they're 30 days overdue? Why aren't we requiring a charge for a late payment?
That section of the lease regarding late payments, there is a late payment section within the lease, and it is basically the, the same standard of language that you see in all the other leases at the airport.
But, so none of the airport leases collect late payments? Late payment fees?
They, they have payments that are required for, that are associated with the collection of the payment. So for instance, if you had to spend money to get a collections agency, or if you spent money on the attorneys to have to send letters, all of those fees associated with that would be assessed to the tenant.
Those are collection fees. They're not late payment charges, correct? Two totally different, two totally different issues. Because if you charge a late payment and a late payment charge, they may pay the full rate plus the charge, and you wouldn't have to go to collection. So we don't really want to drag it out until we have to go to collection. So, I mean, that's normally the way I've had leases that I've had to sign. So that was one of my questions. The other one is the voluntary quiet zones, noise abatement procedures. Why is that voluntary?
Because the FAA does not allow us to dictate or mandate flight operations. We do not have any control over aircraft flight operations. That's all FAA-driven.
Is it wheels off the ground that you no, no longer have control?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So if, let's just take Mile High's flight box, I guess that's what you would call it.
Yes, ma'am.
If they use the entire flight box, would they be as noisy as if they didn't use the entire flight box? Because if I understand this correctly, they are given an area that they can fly in, but they don't necessarily have to use the whole area. Is that correct?
To the best of my knowledge, they are, have that area designated, which was created by the FAA TRACON, Terminal Radar Approach Control Facility, and they entered into a letter of agreement that we are not party to between them and TRACON. As far as if they used it in full or not, I don't think that I could accurately answer that question. I don't, I, I, there are so many variables that...
So we'd have to ask TRACON about that?
Yes, ma'am. That'd be my recommendation.
Okay.
If, if we can jump in, I think, so when you, when you look at that, at, at least, and this is more anecdotal, that there's not a requirement there, but what you, you do see is that occasionally TRACON will move them out into different areas into that based on incoming flight traffic that they've seen, and that was communicated to us by TRACON.
But on a normal flight, if they're, if TRACON doesn't have to move them because of incoming flights, I guess my question is, and perhaps you can't answer it, is, do they have to use the entire space, or can they cut it down in order to make the flight shorter? That's a question I would have to ask TRACON, because that could be part of a noise problem is they're not using the whole flight box, so...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have, is there anybody here from Mile High skydiving? When, when you went over this lease with their attorneys, did they understand that the drop zone that they're using right now can be moved at any time because that's up to the airport manager? So it has nothing to do with this lease. It will not validate or invalidate this lease if we move that drop zone. Is that correct?
The statement, yes. To speak to your specific question, first of all, I can't speak for their attorney, but I can tell you that from our perspective, we did make it clear that that is the case, that the airport manager does designate the drop zone, and that it is not in conjunction with this lease.
Well, we were very clear on that. That was the point of multiple conversations about, that that is not related to this conversation. There were, there were occasions in the conversation where they wanted to bring the two issues together, but we said, no, the city ordinance is, is in place, allows the airport director to designate those drop zones. So I know we talked about it quite a bit in the conversations.
Okay, because that's 13.4.2 on your lease, and I don't want that to be a problem that if we decide to move that drop zone, they say we're in conflict on this lease. So I just wanted to make sure they understood that. And I want to make two friendly amendments. Is now the time to do that, or later, after we have discussion? Yeah, they're not going to be a friendly, but...
Why don't we wait until other people have spoken, and then you come back in?
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So David, you've heard a lot of people tonight say we shouldn't pass this lease through, but what happens if it, if it actually does fail? What's the next step?
I'm probably going to punt to Eugene. My understanding is if this lease doesn't fail, then we would end up going back to council for further direction, because this whole issue was as directed by council to come up with a resolution, so that we're not in compliance, so that we come into compliance with FAA grant assurances.
So, so I'll jump in, and so the, the issue is, is that in the existing lease, there's offending language related to the fact that when the payment based on that lease was due to Mile High's skydiving or pulling a grading permit. Absence of pulling a grading permit, they were not required to, to pay the lease rate. As it was indicated in the council comm and, and David's presentation, in, in having discussions about the airport, we realized that that was violating grant assurances, because the FAA does not allow you to land bake and essentially have property for free. So what happens in that case is that if council does not approve it today, and Eugene can jump in if he needs to, if council does not approve that lease today, we revert back to the existing lease, and we still have the offending language in that.
Okay. Would denying this lease tonight prevent any further activity by Mile High's skydiving?
No, sir.
Why not?
Because we would revert back to the original lease, which doesn't require payment, number one. Number two, they can still make the payments for the drop zone under the municipal code that allows for an annual permit fee for that unleased property at the airport, and they also are current on all the other leases that they operate out of at, at the airport.
And, and if I can add more specifically, the actual SBO lease is a lease on the north side of the airport, and that's where the operations are carried out. This lease is, is for utilization of the Quonset hut as a, as a parachute packing facility, but their operation center is actually on the north lease that is specifically allowed to be an SBO.
Okay, and then there's also a provision in, in the lease to allow Mile High's skydiving to back out of the agreement in, within a year?
That's correct, yes, sir.
How did that come about?
That was part of the negotiation, simply because in the event that they did want to build the facility in the future, that they would be able to take that, not be tied up for 12 years in that one location of, of prime real estate that they have, and be able to go to a location that would be more suitable for the skydiving operations, the facility that we had discussed. But because they're not ready to do that yet, they still wanted the option to be able to move to a different location when they did decide to build that future facility, number one. Number two, we felt that it was beneficial for us as well for that future development, because we are already in the process of looking at development for the south side of the airport, and we feel that that area would be better suited for other types of operations, once they did decide to build their facility.
Okay. One more question. When does the clock start on that one year opt-out?
I believe it is October of 2015.
Oh, it's already basically like four months, five months out?
Yes.
Okay. No more questions, thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
Okay, I have some questions, too. One of the members of the audience asked why there was no date for the first payment. Is that correct?
I apologize, I had a hard time hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. One of the members of the audience asked why there was no date in the lease for the first payment. Is that correct?
April 1st, Section 3.1.
Really? Okay. Never mind, that's answered. I also don't understand why we don't have any penalties, because that's part of most leases, is that you pay a penalty if you're late. It's also part of many city leases, for instance, with the new NextLight, if I miss my first, if I miss one day at any time, my rate doubles, so... Another member of the audience asks if you had reviewed all the insurance policies for Mile High? That they're current on all their insurance?
As far as I can recall off the top of my head, yes, ma'am.
And we also forward those insurance policies to our risk management department for review.
Okay, that's good. I'm unclear about what, why the city is unable to have any control over bad actors at the airport.
Bad.
And, well, people who show disregard, people who don't, we, we do have voluntary noise abatement. It's all voluntary, but, you know, generally, if you don't voluntarily do what you're required to do and everybody else is doing it, then it becomes mandatory for you, because you really aren't being a bad, you're not behaving yourself. And we have no control over that, apparently?
That's correct. That falls within the jurisdiction of the FAA. We provide a facility for aircraft to take off and land from and make sure that it's in a safe environment. The actual operation of the aircraft falls within, within the purview of the Federal Aviation Administration and their regulations, and we cannot dictate or control how, when, how often people fly.
We can't control the hours, or the noise, or anything?
The, the short answer to that is no, ma'am. We can't.
It, it has to be, it has to be uniform for everyone at the airport. So I can't say, Councilmember Christensen, you can operate in this, this timeframe. Councilmember Bagley, you can operate in this timeframe. So if, if you look in, in all of the clauses related to the rules, and, and really, a lot of this is embedded in the anti-discrimination piece of the FAA regulations, essentially what they say is you have to treat everyone the same.
Yes, but then everybody needs to behave the same.
Correct. It's just, you know, that's, it's the way that the FAA approaches this situation, and that's part of the grant assurances.
That's why we really need to avail ourselves of the opportunity to have some discussion with Mr. Polis and the FAA. Is there any possibility of putting a landing fee for excessive noise, which is allowed by the FAA?
I think that is a, probably going to be a fairly long discussion. I would highly recommend against it, simply from the standpoint of a general aviation You will rarely find general aviation airports that have landing fees, particularly of the, the size and classification of Longmont. It pretty much kills general aviation. People stop coming there.
But this is just for excessive noise. It's not for landing fees in general. It's just for excessively noisy.
So when you establish a, a landing fee for aircraft, you can't discriminate against ones that are noisy versus ones that aren't noisy. If you establish a landing fee, it has to be a uniform and justifiable fee for all aircraft.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm going to jump in here. Do, does any of our other airport leases have a late payment as part of the lease?
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I have reviewed three leases, as well as the cheese importer's lease, as well as a farmland lease that's on our share drive. None of those leases that are for land or ground leases contain provisions for late payments, except for your default of the lease if you are late within whatever day period that that is defined as. We also do have the ability, as David mentioned, to collect the fees associated with collection agency and/or attorneys, any attorneys' work that's done on that. But it appears, just on that cursory review, as well as asking Jim Golden, that the late fees are not addressed in that particular way, but we could do that. In addition, I would point out that...
I'm not saying that we should do that. I'm not recommending it. I just, I want to point out that if we started to do it on this particular case, then it would look like we were being arbitrary and capricious, if that hasn't been, I mean, our pattern in the past. And I guess my other question is, we really haven't had much trouble with collecting on our leases out there generally, do we? Or, no? Okay, great.
I would also mention, Mayor Coombs, that we did do a full analysis of the lease payments, actually all payments from Mile High at the airport, and we have found none that are, that have been late, that is on time or within 30 days of the due date.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Glad I could be here tonight. So I guess I've got, I guess I've got a couple of minor comments rather than questions, but you can stand there and nod at me and roll your eyes. The, so there are very few moments when I can actually use my career as, as I could on this. So I read the lease, and before I start talking about the lease itself and the terms, you know, it sucks. You know, I apologize, first of all, that I couldn't be here for all the public invited to be heard comments. I was not bailing because I didn't want to hear people talk. I was up giving a presentation at the Leeds School of Business that I committed to a year ago, and so originally, my plan was to just not be here at all, but I shortened the presentation and then literally sped back to be able to participate. So I apologize if my, my tardiness seemed too tardy, but I did not mean to offend or ignore any of the comments. Fortunately, this is my second term on council, and I've had the opportunity to hear probably a lot of the things that were expressed tonight, and if it's anything like what has been expressed in the past, it sucks. You know, without a doubt, the, I've, I've actually got a hearing problem where I hear background noise more than when, if you were talking to me like this and someone is having a conversation back there, I will hear everything you're saying. It works great for court, because I can hear opposing counsel, and, but it, it drives me nuts. If I am at, at home and there is a, a wine anywhere in the house, a drip, I am one of those people that it just bugs the hell out of me, and I got to get up and go find it, and I'm not going to sleep till I eliminate it. So I understand. I can sympathize and empathize with, with the comments of our citizens and our neighbors about, about the airport. I've gone out and visited Mile High, talked to Frank. I am not for or against them, or for or against, you know, anybody in this situation, but I, I do empathize with, with people who are saying that they're bothered by the airplane noise. Unfortunately, we even went ahead and hired literally the nation's foremost airport and FAA attorney in order to figure out what we could do to alleviate some of the problem. And that was not very satisfying, as far as the information we were told. He, he talked with us in private at executive sessions, as well as in public, where we had community meetings, and I'm, I'm sure that many of you were there and left disappointed. I also, at the very beginning, I was, I, it was me. I encouraged you to file a lawsuit, you know? Blame me, you know, I guess, for, for, for that fiasco. But the, but we also learned that, you know, it's, it's not an easy solution to fix, because at the end of the day, the FAA is the one person responsible for truly... because at the end of the day, the FAA is the one person responsible for truly, you know, affecting what happens in the air. So what can we do? And so I would like to point out some things that this lease actually does. You know, I know that there's anger and there's disappointment and frustration, but this lease actually, the, the city attorney, Eugenie, I'm not gonna say this very much, you know, did a lot of things right in the lease. Is it perfect from a FAA perspective of eliminating skydiving? Absolutely not. It, it's not. However, it does a few things. First of all, every April 1st, they have to pay in advance. Okay? There is no late fee. But as an attorney, a lot of times I don't put things in the contract because it's going to be impossible to get the other side to agree. But there are other ways than, than the obvious for dealing with things. So, for example, if they don't pay on time, there's no late fee. However, after 30 days, you know, Section 17 says they're in breach. And there's a whole list of things that the city can do, including bringing down the wrath of God and kicking him off the airport if they're late. So the contract is pretty tight as far as if they, if they don't pay within the grace period, they're in big time trouble, as my eight-year-old says, versus trouble. But big time trouble. So hold city council accountable to that, if, accountable. If they don't pay within 30 days, they have that grace period, and then we have the authority to do a lot of things. And that Section 17 is pretty comprehensive. Okay? All, next, Section 4.2. They're not allowed to use it for any other purpose. They can't all of a sudden expand and become an FBO, for example. It's a smaller footprint than original, correct? Originally, they wanted to come in and build this huge facility and hangar. That's no longer the case. Now, could they in the future? Yes. But this lease is not that. You know, before, the old lease is basically where Mile High Skydiving is planning on, you know, more planes, more hangar space. So it's not that. That's Section 1.1. Section 2.1, before it was a 20-year lease. We're not renewing the 20-year lease. We got them to agree to a 12-year lease. So again, a 12-year lease, you know, they're gonna have a harder time getting financing from banks if they wanted to build something huge. So that 12-year is another way, a small way of trying to eliminate the problem, or at least minimize the problem. Section 3.1, are they paying going market rates outside airport? No. But they are paying exactly what everyone else pays at the airport for ground leases. So they're not getting a deal. Next, again, Section 3.4, whenever, so in my firm, whenever we have a contempt hearing, meaning someone violated a court order, we rejoice because it means that we can go and we can file contempt. And guess what we get at the end? Attorney fees. So it's, it's very similar here. If we instigate litigation against Mile High, we're covered. Meaning they have to pay our city fees, our legal fees, all kinds of stuff. So again, that's one more tool that we can use to hold their feet to the fire. Next, we're also requiring insurance on, on all kinds of levels for their automobiles, for their planes, for catastrophes, million-dollar policy. Okay? Next, and here's the kicker, that, that I, there's moments like this when I'm torn. Do I speak up and try to be a good politician and make you happy or keep my mouth shut? Has Frank signed this yet? Has, has Frank signed it yet? He's signed it. Okay, good. So, section, so, so Section 3.1 clearly states, so there's different ways of making people do things. Okay? And Eugenie, cut me off and tell me I'm wrong if I'm wrong about any of this legal stuff. But you can, there, there's Colorado statute that says you're not allowed to do something, like you have to obey the speed limit, you can't kill people. But there's also a contractual way of making people do things. We have no federal statute or state statute that allows us to force them to follow the noise abatement procedures. We can't force them to unless there's a contract. Section 13.1 states that they will comply with the city noise abatement. Now, I saw Eugenie wince, but it does say that, you know? So, again, now, is it enforceable? Don't know. But it's something. It's better than nothing. Next, they also say that they've got, they also contractually promise that they're going to force, basically assure that their employees and their customers also follow the noise abatement procedures. They've also gotta follow the FAA regs, and if they're not in compliance, technically that's a breach. See Section 17. So would it be in a perfect world for you folks? Not necessarily for some folks, but in a perfect world, would they go away? Yes. Are they going to? No. Do we have to give them a lease? Yes. If myself and Councilmember Moore wanted to go out there and build hangars, you can't stop us. As long as it's an aviation-related purpose, we're gonna get the same lease rates, and as long as the land is available, we're allowed, if we have the money, to go out there and the city's gotta give us a 20-year lease. So we can't stop them. But I think that this lease goes-
Can I jump in on that piece?
Sure.
You are correct in that if there's land available and someone wants a, a lease for an aviation-related purpose, we have to then follow the FAA rules and, and go out with an RFP. What we can do though is, it doesn't have to be where people want it. It can be based on the land use and what we can do. So I wanted to point that out. We do have the ability to say, "No, it fits better here." But as long as we give people the opportunity, but we can't prevent them as long as there's land that's available.
Right. So my, my point is, you know, we can't prohibit Mile High Skydiving from operating out there. We have to give them a lease, and I think that the city attorney's office has done a pretty good job, even probably pushing and overstepping boundaries, and Eugenie's like, "No, no, no." But they've done a great job in doing what they could to try to address the citizens' concerns. And the alternative is going back to the old lease-
Getting no money.
And getting no money and having a lawsuit where they come and they tell us already what we know, which is you can't tell us what to do up in the air and you can't treat us differently than everybody else. And so that's kind of the position that I, I believe we're in. And so a vote for the lease is not saying, "Screw you constituents. We don't care about the noise." In my mind, hopefully people will see that, you know, behind closed doors, say what you want about council. You know, everybody on council is trying to figure out a way to make it all work. And we realize that it doesn't make everybody happy, but in my mind, the lease is a way to, at least in spirit, try to, try to address some of the, the concerns that we're hearing about noise issues.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So I heard that Frank has signed this lease, correct? So any modifications would pretty much null and void the lease. Thank you.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would like staff to contact TRACON and find out about that flight box. Does Mile High Skydiving have to use the entire area that's in the flybox, flight box? And if they don't, because the way I'm visioning it is that they don't use the entire flight box because they can make shorter rounds, therefore do more pickups for an economic reason. They can make more flights if they don't have to use as much of the space to go up. And if that would, if you would ask TRACON please, if that would mitigate noise, that would help them be a better neighbor. And we could, we could express that as far as their voluntary commitment to being a noise abatement. So I would like you to do that, please.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, in our visit with TRACON, it was indicated to us that, and to give a little bit of background, that they are the architects of that flight box. They are very, they claim ownership of the flight box.
Correct.
My understanding is the design of the flight box was to provide an area between the approach and arrival corridors and the departure corridors for DIA, to provide an area for Mile High to operate within so they didn't have to be in constant communication. Although they do stay in communication with TRACON, they didn't have to constantly tell them what altitude they were at, where they're gonna be going next. It provided an area for their operation. So my understanding is they, they do not have to use a small part of it. They do not have to use all of it. It's strictly up to their operational needs as a designed area for operation. The other indication that was given to us in our meeting with the manager of TRACON was that when we brought up the fact that there are times that Mile High operates outside that flight box, they indicated that they are aware of the times that they depart the, the area of operation and it is because of their direction, because of the aircraft that's coming through or operating, and they need them to move to a different location. So they do direct them outside the flight box during the times that they do that.
But do you understand my question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We'll get you this, a specific response from TRACON.
Okay, that would be great. I also think, going back to Councilman Santos's question, if I make a friendly amendment to this lease, does it invalidate the lease?
I think we would have to take it back to them
Okay.
for, for the, for the change. Just so I think council, I think, so part of it is bringing a lease to council requires that the other party have that signed before council considers it so that council knows that they've accepted the lease. So that's just part of what we do on all processes.
And my problem is Section 3.4 on the late payment. And I understand what Councilman Bagley was saying, but the second sentence in this says, "If the city starts collection procedures or incurs any costs in collecting payment." I would like that "if" changed to "when" so that there is no question that we will start late collection fees or collection process. Because if you say, "If the, if the city starts collection," it leaves doubt that they ever will start. If you change the "if" to "when," does that make sense?
Councilmember Christensen?
I'd just like to bring up some small point here. When Councilman Bagley was talking about city noise abatement, that's good for our city. However, the flight box extends all the way down to Gun Barrel. It goes over Nywhet. So our, what I have read from various sites is that what Mile High is doing is circling around Gun Barrel and Nywhet and also up around Altona. And so the problem is not just the city of Longmont. It's noise that's even more extreme in other places other than Longmont. So, thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The, I, I understand the intent, Councilmember Peck, of what you're saying. However, there's a difference between an ordinance and a private contract. We hold all the power. All it takes is four votes to tell city council, the policy will be if they don't pay on time, we hold them responsible and we act. We don't need their permission. We don't need their input. We don't, as long as we have the contract in place, they're bound. So the "if" has nothing to do with them. It's us. And so what I mean is, so if we go back and we say, "Well, we want to change that when," that's rejecting their offer. Meaning that they've signed it. If we sign it, we're done. If we say no, all the things we've talked about, the concerns that I mentioned tonight, the voluntary flight rules, it just opens up the, opens up the legal tacos, so to speak. And I've never used that term before. It just was, it's been a long day. The legal taco. Yes. But, so, so the change would require another signature on their part, but no change, if we leave it as "if", that's an agreement between us and the city saying, "We, maybe we will, maybe we won't." But tonight, for example, all it takes is just consensus to city staff saying, "Make sure you enforce this. If they miss a payment, let us know," and then we just act. We don't need to put that word in there to actually do anything. It's on us. It's not on them.
And Mayor Coombs, if I could add one, one thing to that point, it, it is a somewhat automated process. When we do have a late payment, accounting automatically notifies the city attorney's office at a certain date and, and, and that process starts. So we certainly could make that change as proposed, but I, I just would mention that even in 2015, that process actually, we did have someone who was not paying that led to the collection process starting, and that lease actually was relinquished and another user took over that lease. And so we have routinely, I would say, you know, collected and led to, you know, action being taken on the city's part when someone doesn't make a payment, although it isn't terribly common, luckily.
And the other thing I was gonna say is, I spent a couple of, I, when emails would come in last year, I spent some time when they'd come in on Saturdays and zip out to people's homes. Sometimes I'd knock on the door and talk to them. Other times I'd just look. Most of the time, there was a buzz going on. So, I mean, it's a real problem. But most of the times I went out there, a lot of these people didn't live in Longmont. And the problem becomes one of jurisdiction, meaning that if you live in Gun Barrel and they're flying over your house, we have no authority over Gun Barrel. We have no authority over, you know, literally anybody wheels up. We don't have authority. Just like judges don't have authority over divorces at county court, or just like Judge Vandehaire or, or soon-to-be new municipal judge doesn't have any authority over certain misdemeanors or felony cases. As a legislative body, we cannot enforce the law outside of the city of Longmont. And in the case of the FAA, it's as soon as that plane leaves the ground, they're outside the city of Longmont for all intents and purposes. And so this is a situation that's rare that I feel impotent. But this is one that I do, I feel powerless. I mean, in a lot of ways, except for what we've done in the lease. That's what I believe.
Councilmember Santos?
Harold, do you have something to say?
Well, what I was gonna say is sort of taking what I've heard thus far, and if council wanted us to take a different stance in terms of beginning the breach proceedings, council could direct staff after voting this to say, "At day 35, if they haven't paid," I'm just throwing something out. "We want you to proceed with breach proceedings," which council direction to staff means they're late, we're going down the road of breach.
But that doesn't have to be as part of this lease.
No, no. I mean, I was just taking what I was hearing from council, saying that's a way to, to-
Right.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, there's been a lot of work that has gone into this. Not everyone's going to be happy. The other lease that was prior to any of us being on council was approved. There were issue, there was issues that were found by staff, and I greatly appreciate that. Is it a perfect lease? No. Is it one that tightens things up? Yes. So I've moved ordinance 201609.
All right, it's been moved in second, and let's vote. Okay, it passes five to two with Councilmember Christensen and Councilmember Peck descending.
Okay, Mayor Coombs, your next item is General Business 11A Bon Farm Park Land Set Aside Update, and Joni Marsh will start this off.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Joni, before you start, I'll wait for folks that need to leave. Before you start, so I met with the proponents of this development months ago, like three or four months ago. Had general conversations. I have not, as I tell anybody that approaches me about any type of development, you're gonna get appro- type of development, you're going to get approval on your merits, on how you deal with staff, residents, and as long as you're within the code. So I just wanted, noted that while I did meet with them, I have a, an open mind to whatever's being proposed. Thank you.
Mayor Coombs and members of Council, Joni Marsh with Planning and Development Services. So as we begin, I think it'd be important to point out, as Councilmember Santos brought up during public invited to heard, to be heard, I think there may be a little confusion as to what process is currently taking place with this property. So this property is annexed to the city, it was annexed in 2005. The property is currently, has an application in for rezoning. Tonight is not a hearing on the rezoning application. That rezoning hearing will first go to Planning Commission in the near future, and then it will come to you with Planning Commission's recommendation. When this property was annexed in 2005, the neighborhood was very involved during that time, and one of the things that they brought before council was the idea of including in the annexation agreement a specific clause for a neighborhood park set aside. So in this annexation agreement, which is attached to your packet in Section 2.11, you'll see a very specific and unique clause that you won't see in any other annexation agreement that I can recall at the city regarding the city's option for a first right of refusal on that park property for purchase. Council in 2005 did set aside $240,000 for that purchase, and that, those funds continue to be held in the general fund specific for this purpose. You know, one of the, one of, some of the stipulations that are really specific in that annexation agreement obviously are contractual with the city, and prior to bringing that to Planning Commission, we felt it was important to bring that back to council to vet and take a look at the proposal that has been offered, to make sure that, that met with either council's expectations, or met the terms of the annexation agreement, or if it doesn't, that we may need to actually amend that annexation agreement. So what we'd like to do this evening is get some direction from you regarding whether or not you want to exercise the right of first refusal in that annexation agreement, let it lapse, or perhaps give alternate direction that we would then maybe, maybe need to amend the annexation agreement in conjunction with the rezoning. We would like to do this ahead of time so that we're not causing additional process for the applicant, of having them go to Planning Commission and having Planning Commission not really having the benefit of understanding what the contractual obligation holds them to or not. Currently, the project as proposed would not meet that, so we thought it best to bring it before you get some direction so that we can keep this application moving. So staff has met with the applicant, the DRC review has been completed. This is obviously one of the items that came out of that review is something we needed to check on. Our Public Works Natural Resources staff, Steve Ranswiler in particular, has spoke with the applicant, has some history with this park site, and is going to talk a little bit about the proposal that the applicant has put forward, how that fits into the master plan, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor. So we're not, so my, so it's just not a simple redo?
Mayor Coombs and Councilman Bagley elaborate, perhaps?
Maybe I'm not, my understanding was that...
Do you have the annexation agreement, or?
It's already been annexed.
It's already been annexed, so...
No, no, but my understanding was, we just didn't post, when I read my packet, I just got the impression that they didn't post.
No, we're, we're in 11A, not 9.
Oh.
One second.
Okay.
Thank you, Joni. Mayor Coombs, Mayor Coombs Counsel, Steve Ranswiler, Public Works and Natural Resources, Project Manager. And as Joni basically alluded to, past councils have directed staff to consider a small neighborhood park on this site, and there was some money set aside for it. Basically, with the three options listed in the, in the council communication, we just wanted to check in to make sure council still would like to pursue some semblance of a small park site on that property. We could either purchase that property per the annexation agreement that's currently in place, or we can come back to you after negotiating with the developer to have the developer, to amend the annexation agreement to allow the developer to dedicate that property to the city instead of purchasing it, and then using that $240,000 that council set aside for purchase for a different purpose, which would be design and construction of that park site. Staff has evaluated the developer's proposal and feels as though we could still make an impact, meeting the guidance of the Parks, Trails and Recreation Master Plan approved by city council back in 2014. We don't currently think that $240,000 will be sufficient to cover the entire costs of the development of that park, but it would be a good portion of it. And those are other issues that we can be resolving as we move through our budgeting and capital improvement program in the future. So with that, I'll open it to questions.
So when you say the $240,000, let's see, they're, you know, they were talking about giving the city .85 acres is one option to consider. And then we would have this $240,000 that's set aside, would that be enough to develop the park, or there'd be additional money that would be required above and beyond the $240,000 to build a .85 acre park?
Mayor Coombs, it's staff's assessment, you know, without any sort of a master plan or a real assessment of the site, it's very tough to, to evaluate that. I can tell you that the Parks, Recreation and Trails Master Plan did include in one of the appendices, an assessment by the consultant back in 2014, that it's about $90,000 an acre to develop a park site. And that's with nothing, that's just grading.
Right.
Sod, irrigation, and then you start adding things like a shelter, playgrounds, things like that. Most recent playground bids we've had come in have been $150,000 to $200,000 for a playground. Shelters are $40,000 to $50,000. I don't want to say that these elements will definitely be included in that park site because we are still committed to going through a full public process, getting input from the community at large. But you can see how those costs start adding up, and you don't have the economies of scale when you start extrapolating some of these costs over a 10 to 20 acre park site when you only have a .85 acre.
Right.
You still have to have some of these items that do cost a certain amount of money.
All right. All right. Councilmember Christensen?
If we remember, though, that there is a pocket park right next to it that would be contiguous with it, the little gazebo and all that, would that alleviate any of the cost of having to provide a shelter? Because there is a little bit of a shelter there, and this is only a .85, less than an acre. Do you think that would, well, the other question I have is, this money was set aside, $240,000 in 2004, so shouldn't it be a little bit more money than that?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen, I'd hate to speculate as far as what the public desires are for the park. Shelter's a very common amenity in a park, but you're right, the gazebo nearby, which I don't know offhand whether or not that is open to the overall public, or whether that is an amenity that's just open to the Bond Farm neighborhood. I'd have to do some research on that, but that's a possibility. And I asked that same question when council set aside $240,000 in 2005. I was hoping it grew. Unfortunately, Teresa Malloy confirmed that $240,000 is still just an amount, it's still $240,000, not anymore.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, in the council communications, it says any additional funds to this project would take items away from other projects. I have really no issues with staff going back and talking, some sort of negotiation, whether they want to dedicate parkland to the city. I also have, if it's $240,000, you know, what, you know, it's got to be planned, and as, we're not going to develop a master plan for this park this evening. That's a, that's a nice, long process with a lot of public input, which is, which is vital. But I, you know, to get that rolling would be nice. Again, $240,000, $240,000 is quite a chunk of change, but when it comes to not, not just building it, but, you know, maintaining it for years to come, it is a cost that we'll have to consider. So that's something, you know, something to think about, not only for this council, but future councils down the road. Other than that, you know, there's other people that want to speak, but I would have no problem with a dedication and using that 240 to see what we can do in that area.
Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, do you want to go first, Dale?
Sorry about that, council. Dale Rademaker, General Manager, Public Works Natural Resources. I really think tonight, what staff is needing direction on is, are you still interested in investing money in a park in this particular neighborhood? Yes or no? You've got $240,000 set aside. I think we can go back and look at all the other issues, both with regards to what the total cars, cost of the park may be, which is not currently in our CIP. So if there are any additional costs, that is why we do a five-year CIP and bring that back to you for your consideration. I think the other issue is with regard to timing, that would also be dealt with through the CIP, where you can consider the timing of all the neighborhood parks that are sort of in the queue right now. And so you have, you have the whole picture. So I think tonight, it's really, do you want to direct us to move towards amending the annexation agreement to allow for the $240,000 to be used for other park uses, and in this case, it'd be design and development? And then to flush out the rest of those details and bring that back? That's really, I think, what we're trying to get to tonight.
Okay.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So first of all, I think having this co-housing development there is pretty cool. It's another option for housing that we don't currently have in Longmont, so I'd like to see, make sure this, I'd like to see this project move forward, and people are excited about it, and that's, they've been involved with it for the last few years. It's a good project. Dedicated parkland, I have no issue with, but I would not support putting this one in the front of the line for completion of a park. That is just totally unfair. There's a sense of fairness here, and as a condition of this agreement, I would expect the developer drop that request, as well as we would go ahead and utilize the $240,000 to help construct this park. And we already have known in the past that we have run into issues with O and M on city parks, and we, we're going to get to a point again where we're going to need to raise the park fee, and I'm sure that whoever's on council that night will hear, hear about it a lot. So I'd like, let's just, I would support the .85 dedication and the $240,000 set aside back in 2005, but I would not support expecting completion by, in this case, 2018, so if that's any kind of direction.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So it's an either/or, right? Purchase two acres or be gifted .85 according to the packet? Am I reading that right? Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, the way the annexation agreement currently reads is purchase up to two acres of land mutually agreeable behind, between the seller and the buyer. We can either exercise that right, if we have a consensus that we don't want to have any park in this neighborhood, we can let that lapse, and the developer can use that land for private development, or the dedication of the land at .85 acres. That's what the developer's offering right now. All right. So next question is, what, there's a pocket park down there, but what are the parks nearby? How close are they? Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, in the Parks, Recreation and Trails Master Plan, they identified gap areas. This was not one of the neighborhoods that has a very large gap area, that were, there were eight specific ones identified, but the text in the document also identified smaller gap areas that were just outside the half-mile radius to recreation areas, or that were separated by large hindrances, major roads, railways. There's a railroad just out there here that separates these folks, reminds of Walton Park. There are Thompson Park and Roosevelt Park and Price Park to the north, but there's nothing within that half-mile radius for the southern portion of the Bond Farm neighborhood. Including this... The southern portion? But the, but there, but there's a pocket park. How big's the pocket park? Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, it's not a, it's not a city pocket park, it's something that is... Homeowners, I get it. It's in the right of way, it's the homeowners, it's about as big as the circle in the center here. Okay, so it's little? Yes. It's little. And then, so, next question. So city, I don't remember exactly what it was, but we re, re, retooled our goal for, I mean, per capita park square footage for residents and all that stuff. That was a couple of years ago. Where are we with that? Do we need more park space based on what city council enacted in 2013, 2012, something like that? Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, it's actually 2014 when the Parks, Recreation and Trails Master Plan was... This is a long, this is a long job. It's just time stretches. Approved by council. And actually, the master plan went away from having a certain number of acreage per capita in the city because we wanted to really focus on areas where we were lacking, recreation areas within a reasonable distance for people to get to there from their living areas. So that's why we identified the, the gap areas on the city. This park would serve to rectify one of the smaller gap areas within the master plan, identified within the master plan.
So, and I guess that my question, because when you said, "Where are you?" What?
What I'm saying is that before, there was, I mean, we spent months trying to figure out how to, as Councilmember Moore said, solve the problem of maintaining and operating our parks. We kept building parks, but we didn't have the funds to operate, maintain them. So I guess really what I'm asking is, at present, are we maintaining a steady pace that is we build parks, we have the funds to do O and M? Or by building this park, are we really saying, "Ah, we're going to build it, we'll figure out how to maintain it later?"
Councilmember, her mayor, Perdán Bagley, a couple of things. We identified in the communication that we think the ongoing O and M is about $6,000. And so again, through the CIP and through the budgeting process, we would include this in, and then you can look at through the out years, how that does or doesn't impact your park maintenance fee and your overall general fund. What our commitment is, is that we won't build a park without understanding and preparing for the ongoing O and M. And so as we build and renovate new parks, we're going to have additional O and M, and we have programmed, according to the, the parks that are identified in the CIP today, the O and M associated with those. So this one is not in your CIP, and so when it comes into the CIP, that is when we would do that analysis and look at that.
Okay.
Does that help you?
It doesn't only help me, it's, it's like, wow, Dale, that's awesome.
That's what we're going to do.
That was, that was, I mean, just gave me a big smack of truth. Thanks.
And there's a piece on the O and M that, that I wanted to remind council, so when, if council, some of the council members weren't here during that timeframe, but so when we looked at it, we said, we talked about the $2 park fee and, and applying that to that broader O and M as we look into the future. We know that as we continue to grow, there, there's probably going to be a gap, but we identified different opportunities to manage that gap in the future in that conversation that was part of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. But again, to echo what, what Dale said, anything that's not included in that capital plan does create a greater burden for O and M, and it will have to be calculated.
And then what could we do, an opportunity cost question? If we didn't spend the $240,000 on this without violating the silos and, what could we do with that $240,000 other than use it for this?
The $240,000 is for this.
But if we don't purchase the two acres, that means that we have $240,000 freed up in our budget, correct? So my question is, legally, what could we spend it on?
I'll have Jim correct me on this if I get it wrong, but, you know, the $240,000 is a set aside in your general fund. If you choose not to exercise the option, it, it remains, it would revert into your general fund reserves to be allocated however you would choose.
And the, we can do anything we want with it in the general fund, right? Okay. So I guess, hearing all those answers, I would agree with my friend and colleague, Councilmember Moore. I think that we should accept the .85 acres, so we have the future option. It allows us to program the CIP to figure out a way to pay for the operations and maintenance of that .85 acres. And I don't think that they should, I don't, I don't agree that we finish it by the end of the summer of 2018. I don't think we should set a date. I think we should leave it open. And then the question becomes, what is the best use for that $240,000? And we're always looking for money, so I would rather see other parks, other projects, other, other favorite topics that come up at council even be considered. So that way, we, yeah, that, that's what I'd do. I liked your idea, Councilmember Moore.
So since this $240,000 was set...
So since this $240,000 was set up for parks, would it just be, I'd like to have the option of, there's a park that's a higher priority, that's been in line waiting longer, to maybe possibly consider spending that $240,000 for that. But I like the idea of accepting the .85. I would like to see them build a park there eventually, and I like the idea of having this CSA on the remaining part of the land. I think this is a great concept, and I'd like to support it any way we can. But I hate to make a strong guarantee that we want to build them a park by 2017 or 2018.
Counsel, if I can, I think the, we fully understand the issue of the timing, and again, that should roll through your CIP, just like every other park. I think the difference here, though, is if this property owner's going to dedicate the land, if you decide to pull the $240,000, that's another component of this. If we can get direction to negotiate both of those issues and return back to you with an amendment to the annexation agreement, that would be direction I think we can work with. If the $240,000 is sort of off the table, in my mind, then that's a different negotiation with this particular developer on whether or not they would continue to want to dedicate the .85. That's almost, I think, option one, where we said you just choose not to exercise your option. So it's a different, it's a different approach, I think.
Isn't the .85 already come? Is it upon?
No, no. It's two acres.
No. And it's a first right of refusal to purchase up to two acres of land.
Yeah.
Mayor Coombs, if I could, I think the crux of the matter is, is that the developer's looking to move forward with the project after 10 years of planning, and in order to purchase the property from the landowners, the city has to decide whether we're going to exercise this first right of refusal or not. And if we are, then we have to negotiate with the property owner to purchase however much land we want to, up to two acres, per the existing annexation agreement. If we don't, then we can certainly work with the developer, and maybe they'll want to dedicate land to us for future parks, maybe they won't. Or we can enter into this, what's the developer's proposing currently?
Okay.
With an annexation agreement amendment.
So we have to pay for the .85?
Current proposal is for the property owner to, for the developer to dedicate that land after they purchase the property from the current landowner upon the final plat.
Yes, if we don't exercise it, we still get the .85?
No, 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 no.
If we don't exercise it, it would be the developer's discretion. What we're wanting to do is to amend the current annexation agreement that would allow the developer to dedicate the land to us at a reduced size, and the current proposal by the developer is to take that $240,000 and not put it back into the general fund to be used for other things, but to put that toward the construction of the park, with the hopes that that would expedite the timing of the park to meet with the timeframe of the adjacent development.
Councilmember Christensen?
This is actually a very, very complicated little issue, and it's been rolling around the city since 2004 or 2003. The cohousing community has been working on this plan for three years now at least. In 2004, I believe, the city put aside $240,000 for this park. This park was requested by the neighbors. That's why this has even come up. It was requested by the neighbors because the developer had been working with the neighbors to see how to develop this land. And so to me, to take this money is like a betrayal of the neighborhood. This was specifically asked for by the neighbors, and that's why this possibility exists in the first place. I would suggest that we, as Councilman Moore has said, that we take this, amend the, amend the annexation so that we don't use the right of first refusal, but instead we allow the developer to give back to the city the .85 acre for the development of a park, and that we use the $240,000 to help develop that park. That is what I would move.
I guess after hearing all the arguments and stuff, I kind of am in agreement with you, kind of had a, yeah, she made an emotion, so I guess I'll second it.
Should I make it a different, what do I need to say?
He said you moved it.
You moved it, so it's a motion.
Okay, so moved.
And I second it.
Instinct, Jedi instinct.
Okay. Councilmember, all right, so she moved it, I second it.
That's why I was motioning.
Councilmember Peck?
I guess I don't need to comment, because I was going to second it.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the, I guess the only, I hear what you're saying, but like, for example, over in, over off Deerwood, south of Pace, no, Mountain View, Mountain View or Ninth?
South of Pace. It's Pace.
Yeah, Pace and Ninth, or Pace and, Ninth?
Ninth.
Ninth, Ninth. So south of Ninth, right along Deerwood, that neighborhood has had, it's been built for 15 years, and they have a big park that they've been waiting to have built, where they have a sign that says, "The Future Park of the Neighborhood." And they've been nagging for it for years. So there, I understand, but I look at it as us spending the $240,000 on this particular neighborhood, I'm not saying they shouldn't get their park, I'm just saying it's the equivalent of cutting in line at Disneyland, meaning it's not, it's a fast pass that you're not paying for. So I think that, I mean, I'm all for taking the .85, renegotiating the annexation, but asking, I'd prefer city staff to go back and say, look, we'll take the .85, and the park will be built, but we need to put it in the CIP. That I'm for, but letting them get, giving them $240,000 towards a park when there are areas all over town where they've been waiting a longer period of time and had the same promises, I would, I would say they've got to get in line.
I think Dale's going to respond to you.
Mayor Coombs and members of council?
No, no.
All I was going to say was that, what I understand the motion to be is, accept the .85 dedication, look to program the $240,000 to a park development aspect, but to include this into the CIP in the context of all the other parks, the park that you're referring to is the Fox Meadows Park, which is programmed into the CIP, and that there's sensitivity with regards to whether or not this park should come ahead of, when it comes to actually constructing it, ahead of other parks. That's what's in our head, if that's correct.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
It's option three, isn't it?
It doesn't jump. It just is there.
Option three?
If that's the motion, yep.
Do, yeah, do you agree with that?
Yes. It wasn't, you know what I did not say? It's jumps to the front of the line.
Okay.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Dale, this is a question for you. Are all those other parks, the Fox Meadow, was that what it was called, and are they in the queue already? Are they in the planning?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Peck, if I had the CIP in front of me, I could tell you exactly, but I do know that there are several neighborhood parks. One of them is Workman, one of them is Fox Meadows, there's also additional work happening at Sandstone Community Park. So there's any number of them that we have programmed, but again, that's what we do every year, when we look at the overall CIP. And all that would happen as a result of your action tonight is that this park would roll into and be considered in the CIP relative to everything else that's going on, and you would ultimately provide us direction with regards to priority, and whether or not it goes ahead, behind, or at the same time as something else.
So we do not, or we do have funding for the other parks?
We don't, we do not have funding for every park that's shown in the Park Master Plan. That is a very long-term plan. That goes out 20-plus years. So for instance, we do not have funding to build the Sisters Community Park. That's probably a 20, 30 million dollar proposition. What we do have are some of these neighborhood parks that we know have been sort of a pressure point for neighbors. So there you go. So Workman is designed in '16, built in '17. Garden Acres is construction in '17. Fox Meadows, I think, is in there at some point. So there's several neighborhood parks that we have been wanting to get underway with, and frankly, you know, the flood has delayed several of these parks. That doesn't help those neighbors. They still want their park built. But I think this park can be considered, along with all the other parks that are in the queue, if you will.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
Before you vote, could I ask the clerk to repeat the motion? I want to make sure that it's consistent with Mr. Rattamaker's interpretation.
You can just ask Councilmember Christensen.
Well, I can repeat it. Amend the annexation, so, no, 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 no. To allow the developer to dedicate the .85 acres for the development of the park, and use the $240,000 to help develop the park, and include it in the context of the CIP with sensitivity of other parks in the queue.
So the 240?
Councilmember Moore?
So I think what we really should do is make a friendly amendment to add to option number three, the, to run the park through the process of the CIP program.
What, do you second that?
Yeah, do you accept that?
I do.
Okay.
I think it's already in there.
Yeah, I'll accept that.
Dale made the motion, not me.
Right.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, yeah, I'll agree. All right, so let's, let's vote.
So can I?
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So just to be clear, so the $240,000 isn't being dedicated to this particular park? That's what we mean when we're making, when we...
No, it is being, but it's going through the regular CIP and being planned in the queue. Yeah, it's for this park.
I guess I'm still, I just want to make sure that the 240, I mean, they have to take their, I guess what I'm saying is, the motion, I am still unclear as to whether or not this park gets in line if we pass the motion.
It has to go through the CIP. But it's got a $240 already kicking.
Yeah.
Right. So what does the 240, what happens to this 240,000?
I believe the $240,000 will be shown as a funding source that will cover a portion of the development. The balance of that is going to compete with every other park. So in other words, that may have to delay until there is available funding that does not, that council believes aligns with the overall funding capacity of the city.
So essentially, it's just where you park the money on your accounting until it comes time to build? Okay, great, I can deal with that.
Yeah, we're not writing a check and giving them $240,000. Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs?
Yes, Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. PR 140, Fox Meadows Neighborhood Park. And just in case those of you didn't hear, $102,000 in 2016, $1.4 million in 2017.
I have the CIP available.
He hasn't memorized.
No. Available.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is disposition of open space on the sureword "open space" based upon previous city commitment, and Dan Woolford will make this presentation.
The first sighting in 2016 of Dan Woolford?
Mayor Coombs, councilmembers, nice to be here tonight. Dan Woolford, Public Works and Natural Resources, Land Program Administrator. This particular item, 11B, is an administrative housekeeping item. I think as Councilman Bagley put it, this is definitely one of your legal tacos. A little bit of history, yeah. This particular project and action is, they brought up on the Bone Park a little longer than maybe the 10 years that they've been working on. This is almost 20 years, if you've read the council communication. In 1998, the city purchased Sandstone Ranch, and prior to that acquisition, the Bigalos, Frank Bigelow and the trust, did a recorded exemption that separated 15 acres from the Sandstone Ranch, the 320 acres that we purchased. And within the contract for the Sandstone Ranch, there was a stipulation that the city would provide access to this 15 acres for the Bigalos. So as you can well understand, I'm very excited to be in front of council to share the number of times that we've tried to do this and failed at least three times. So in 2005, we issued the quitclaim deed, and that came back as an erroneous deed, just from a legal description. Again, we reissued it again in 2007 with an incorrect legal description. And in 2008, at the time, the Community Development Director, Phil DeVeckio, issued a revision, a corrected deed to the Bigelow family, asked them to sign it and have it recorded, and we don't know where that documented. It was never recorded, never signed and recorded. So with that, in October of last year, Wally Grant, who's representing the Bigalos, sent a letter that's in your packet requesting that revision. The question for you tonight, I think there's a couple of options, and probably Eugene, you might be the guy to go to here, is, obviously, this all took place prior to 2011, when we developed the disposition of open space. I think that was our recommendation to go through that process, to be transparent, and that would require your referral to the Parks Board. Another option, obviously, previous councils, at least three previous councils, agreed to take that action. So again, those are some options. If you decide to go with the referral back to the Parks Board, I've outlined that process. We will likely take that to the Park Board in the March 14 meeting, and hopefully be back to you with a recommendation from them and an ordinance for this conveyance of .87 acres, hopefully at the latest, the 1st of April. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions from anybody? Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Is it just an easement to grant them access to the land, or is it actually gifting them or giving them the land?
Exactly. It's actually granting them a quitclaim deed on a linear 100-foot wide, about less than an acre of land. So we're deeding that to the Bigalos for this access that was incorporated into the purchase contract for Sandstone.
So my understanding correctly, when basically what we're doing is basically just sending it to Parks and Rec, because that's what the ordinance says, and then you guys are going to be there and go, this is what's up, wink, and then it comes back to us and it's approved? Was that a double wink, Eugene? Was that a wink? Okay, all right, got it. All right, let's do this. I move that we adopt, what was it, the other two?
Option one.
Yeah, option one. I move for option one.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
That was a good wink. I winked at my kids.
Thank you. Passed seven to zero. Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the NOVA Annexation Referral. Brian Schumacher will present this item.
Evening, mayor, councilmembers. Brian Schumacher with Planning and Development Services. You have before you a request from Mr. Chuck Nova to refer the NOVA Annexation into the review process. Property's about 10 acres, north side of Nelson Road, just west of the Target Store. Multifamily land use is proposed. The draft concept planets in your packet shows 232 apartments. The request is for R3 or multifamily high-density zoning. Current zoning is agricultural. There's an existing multifamily development just across the street on the south side of Nelson Road, and that there's planned medium-density residential to the north of this property. Property's currently designated as industrial economic development on the comprehensive plan, although a process we're currently going through with Envision Longmont anticipates potential land use changes in this area that could accommodate multifamily developments at this location. In your packet is a letter from the... In your packet is a letter from the Economic Council staff that is included, indicates support for the proposed land use at this location. Excuse me, the applicant would like to have the opportunity to submit an application pending adoption of the Envision Longmont Land Use Map, or in the event that that perhaps gets delayed, not likely, but they would like to be able to submit an annexation with a land use amendment application as well. In addition to the 10-acre parcel that Mr. Cheknova owns, he is considering purchasing an additional 1-acre parcel immediately adjacent to the west, and would like to include that as part of the annexation if that is acquired. Just to note, this is the initial step in the annexation process. Even if council gives the green light tonight, there's no obligation for council to approve the annexation once it comes back before you. The process would involve a neighborhood meeting. There'd be DRC process review, advisory board review, such as airport advisory board, transportation advisory board, historic preservation commission. There'd be a public hearing with the planning zoning commission. They make a recommendation to city council, and city council would have final decision on this request. That concludes my brief remarks. If you have any questions, be happy to respond. Mr. Cheknova is also here this evening.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Was this land flooded when the flood came?
I don't recall that it was. There was improvements with the Lykan's Gulch drainage channel several years ago that mitigated the potential flooding in this area.
Councilmember Moore?
So, I see there are several different types of buildings. Types are being on the concept plan here, including 24 units of affordable. Is that something that the developers committed to, providing that product for this site?
No, I don't know specifically if they've committed to that yet, but that would be something that'd be come back for with a proposal, and I don't care if Mr. Cheknova would like to respond to that.
Mayor, council, my name is David Cheknova, 8631 Mona Vista Avenue in Nywha. It's a long evening, and I think I have a degree in aviation leasing now. Also, what was really interesting is the Bone Family Neighborhood, people contacted me over 10 years ago to see what they could do to preserve this neighborhood and this park. And as a developer, they came to me, and I coached them, and it's so good that it's actually happening. So, I'm, I was kind of nice because it's really nice to see a neighborhood, get behind a project that is coming to fruition that was very difficult for a neighborhood to do. So, my hats are off to that neighborhood. And I learned what a legal taco is. That's a new, that's a new one, Brian. So, anyway, just to give you a little history, I purchased this property over 10 years ago in the hopes to do some business light industrial there. I'm a commercial developer. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I unfortunately have been here a long time. And I've done a lot of commercial development, and I've done some pro bono work. I did the Safe Shelter, Women's Safe Shelter Project in Longmont, where Ron Stewart came to me, gave me a check for $2.2 million, and said, "Get it done." And we got it done. And it's one of my pet peeves that I've done for Longmont that I'm really proud of. Anyway, a few years ago, as the economy was starting to pick up steam, I put a couple of focus groups together, Longmont people, Denver people, trying to figure out what to do with this parcel of land. And with the revitalization of the Twin Peaks Village Mall, or whatever it's called, it became evident that, and the community around there has changed with all the high-tech businesses around there, that this would be a great location for a multifamily project. Then, in the last year and a half, it became more evident the need for multifamily. And it's not just the need for multifamily, but where does it go? Well, this property happens to be on the bus line, and it's right there, right in front of this property, and the bus line has one more stop on Airport Road, and it goes directly in a boulder. Well, for those of you that read the newspaper, Google's coming to Boulder, and I don't know where they're going to house 1,000 new people. Longmont, Lafayette, Erie, Firestone, Frederick de Kona are going to get the majority of those people, or they're going to displace people in Boulder that can't afford it, and they're going to move those people elsewhere. So, the fact that this property's on the bus line, it's walking distance for people who would live here, can walk to the commercial areas and don't have to drive a car to go to work, can walk to the farmer's market. Just a lot of good things about the property. It became evident that this would make a good multifamily project. Am I a multifamily developer? Yes and no. I have done multifamily. I've stayed away from it. But this, this piece of land is so good for multifamily that I'm going, that's what I think is best for it. Economic Development, of course, wants to keep their acres in their portfolio for future economic development, for business light industrial. We had a couple of meetings with them. They reviewed it on their own, and they came back and supported that. And that was a big factor. If they had not supported this parcel to turn on multifamily, I wouldn't be here in front of you. I don't like to go against what people think is good for a property, and their support was good. And I think some of the other agencies in Longmont, without being a formal request, have also seen this as a good parcel. So, to get back to the question on affordable housing, that's a difficult issue to answer right now at this, at this point in project because we're just starting the project. We will address that. I can tell you, that was one of my questions with my consultants early on, and I'm not an expert on this right now, but I will be the next time I'm in front of you. The, the way, the way affordable housing, I think, works, and again, I'm not an expert, is the rents have risen so high that we're probably not far off anyway in the market. So, I can't answer that question now, but we will address it with staff, and I know you guys will ask that again of us, and I hope to have more definite answers on that. I just don't have them right now. It's just too early.
Yeah, well, I think it's, it's a good place for a project like this to let people walk and shop and catch the bus and...
It's an easy walk to the mall, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
One of the areas that was pointed out to me by a firm that I've hired that is pretty good at this stuff is that I'm, I'm involved with them in doing a light rail project. And when you have the availability not to get in your car at 55 cents a mile, you're saving a few hundred dollars a month. So, even if this project is not in the quote, under the affordable Longmont program, it still may be very affordable because people can walk to work, they can walk to the grocery store, Target and King Supers are right there, and they can walk and bike to work. About 75 percent, when we come to you next time, we'll be showing you a map of the workforce that is within about a mile, mile and a half of this location, and it's really close for walking. So, with that in mind, we're just asking tonight to be accepted in the annexation, to work with staff. For the last 26 years, we've worked with staff. Every project I've presented in this town has been approved pretty much unanimously, I think, and that would be my goal, to be unanimous. I would like to gain favor of everybody on the council and have a really good project for you guys to look at. It may or may not contain the affordability. I don't know that yet, but we will study it.
Well, even if it's not 24 units, if you, you know, get a few units spread without the whole deal, you know, we have an affordability, an affordable housing is at 50% of AMI, which changes every year, obviously, goes up. But that's something that, it's just, that's something that I'm asking for.
And it's something...
And it doesn't have to be 24.
Okay.
But, you know, you know, anything and everything that we can gain with private development versus, you know, the city just kicked in a half a million dollars this year for, to leverage for more financing. So, I, it's just, just making, I'm making the ask, and I understand it's a concept plan, but when you say, when you put 24 units of affordable housing on a concept plan, I'm going to ask the question, are you really committed to it? And that's not like you've made that decision yet.
We have not made that decision, but I can guarantee you, we will have some really good information and answers when we present to you. And we will work with staff, and I will have more information. I mean, we have to deal with lenders and all that stuff. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of what type of loan you're doing, and there's a lot of information that we're far away from, but when we come in front of you, we will have that information.
You know, it's getting kind of late, and alls we're doing right tonight is just a referral. There's lots of, it's just the first step, and I don't see why we wouldn't want to refer, there's, I can't see a reason not to refer, so I'm going to make a motion that we refer this.
Second.
Okay. Let's vote.
That passed seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a nice night. You guys, you guys deserve your small check you get.
Mayor Coombs, your last item is some additional discussion on the appointment of the municipal judge.
Mayor, council, there's just a couple of points we need to update you on. Valerie needs to update you on the individuals that have agreed to be interviewed on the 29th for the selection committee.
So, you did give us the names of individuals, not many, but some, and so I have arranged for them to interview with you next Monday night, as you requested, and so I will pass those on to you. One individual declined. Another one is out of the country until the first of March, so you may want to consider whether you still want to interview that individual once they're back in the country, if they have an interest. But the ones that did agree, their bios are included, and they're interviewed time, so, for Monday night.
John delegated.
No, he is the one that's out of the country.
So, what I mean is, that he didn't delegate?
No, that name came from some, another council member.
Okay, great.
Mayor and council, Eugene May, City Attorney. I did get in contact with Chief Judge Birkenkotter, and she designated District Court Judge Mulvahill to serve on our ad hoc judicial appointment committee. So, that was great news, and I...
It could have been a lot worse. Birkenkotter.
Birkenkotter.
Okay.
So, I did thank the chief judge and had made contact with Judge Mulvahill, said I'd give him an update after this meeting in terms of timing. And so, that, that piece is in place, and if we get the attorney and the citizen, then the committee will be ready to roll.
And then the last piece, Joanne will be getting the email in the council with the job description, as you instructed, hopefully tomorrow.
Are we going to discuss some of the things about, like, you know, after some of the feedback I've heard, I kind of think we should lift the requirement that that person be a city...
Resident.
A resident.
Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Santos?
I don't recall that it was a requirement. I think it was a preference. So, let's be clear, you know, and...
But could that preference, weed thrown out from applying, it would be qualified?
Mayor and council, that's really a council decision. I think, you know, just in terms of pure numbers, it would limit the pool.
Okay. Well, what does everyone else think? Should we make it...
Mayor?
Yes.
Hello. Thank you.
Councilmember Peck?
I, I think it should be lifted as well, that they don't necessarily have to be a resident. I think that was something that was in the Times Call, actually, was misquoted. We said it would be a preference, but in the paper...
Misquoted in the Times Call? You've got to be kidding.
It said that, that that was a requirement.
Oh, that's unfortunate that they didn't get that correct.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I would agree also. I mean, I don't think that, the one email in particular where they, they point out that it's difficult for a judge to both live and judge the people, that, you know, it would be tough. So, I, and I don't know if we're talking about the job description tonight that was on our desk, not tonight, but there is, I read it, that there is one ability to obtain, maintain residence in the city of Longmont. I think we should take that stuff out. And I was, actually, there was one person who's a prosecutor, who's very well-qualified to apply, and he was concerned that, well, he said, "I'm thinking about not applying because, you know, I probably couldn't move to Longmont." And I said, "No, no, no, it's a preference. I encourage you, please, please, apply." So, there are people who are highly qualified, who are thinking about not applying as a result of that preference. So, I'm with the rest of you so far.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Yes, I agree with Councilmember Peck and Councilmember Bagley. And I, but I do understand what Councilman Santos had in mind originally, which is that we want somebody who's, who understands Longmont and is committed to it and loves Longmont. But I don't think that they necessarily have to live, and we want the best person for the job. So, I do think that if this is a hindrance, we should remove that as, as a preference because people too quickly decide, "Yeah, I don't want to do that because I, I would be pressured to move to Longmont." Anyway, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And the only reason I brought that up was that the judge is retained by the residents of Longmont. I have no, you know, I would want the best qualified candidate as well. But just as an email that was forwarded to us by Councilmember Peck, I think they misquoted what the median, median house price in the city of Longmont. The median sales price for a house in Longmont for January was $303,000. Last year's median was $284,000. So...
Okay.
But not judges' houses. Judges like million-dollar houses.
Go ahead, Harold.
No, not quite that.
You're done? Okay. So, now it's time for final call. Public invited to be heard. Anybody from the public like to? All right, so I'll close. Oh, we do, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Council. My name is Peter Spalding, 2734 Juniper Avenue in Boulder, and soon to be a resident of Longmont. I'm the developer for the Bon Farm project, and I just wanted to clarify the process that we went through with the city. The concept plan that we submitted for this proposal was actually designed around that park. So, I held an open house with the entire Bon Farm Neighborhood Association, and we had about 10 families come, plus the prior president and the existing president. And at the time, I was working with Parks and with Kim Sugar, and this was sort of a deal that we came up with. So, donating the .85 acres and then using the general fund, the money that was earmarked for the purchase, of course, the purchase price of the property back in 2006 compared to what it is today is starkly different. So, I can tell you that the, the greater neighborhood is very anxious to have a completed park. So, on that timeline, I just hope that you would consider that because as a developer, as a co-housing developer, we're inclusive of everybody, and we try to be as transparent as possible. So, we hope that this would actually get accelerated. If there's a deadline of 2018 completion, it's probably going to be closer to the fall or even in spring of 2019. So, if that's something you'd all consider, I'd really appreciate it because I know that's... If there's a deadline of 2018 completion, it's probably going to be closer to the fall or even in the spring of 2019. So if that's something you'd all consider, I'd really appreciate it because I know that the greater public and our community is going to be advocating for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Christensen.
First of all, I would like to thank the, the big hair lady who always takes care of the kids at the crossing on Third Avenue for the kids coming out of Central School. And I just learned her name is Mrs. Martinez. And every afternoon and every morning, she's there with her big puffy bouffant and she's smiling and waving and no matter how bad a mood you're in, she makes you feel happy. And she's one of the people that makes Longmont, Longmont. So I want to thank her very much. Secondly, please, Times Call, hire a proofreader because most people opened up the newspaper this morning and went, "What? Longmont's selling to a bunch of Chinese? What's happening?" As somebody who's produced stuff for a long time, this is the, you, you take a Microsoft Word file and it suggests that you replace cheese with Chinese and then if you don't think carefully, you hit it. But your responsibility is to look at it again. Somewhere along the line, somebody should have looked at it again because this is actually about cheese importers, as we all know. But many people don't read anything but the headlines and they think that the Chinese are coming to take over Longmont. So I just would like to put in a plea for a proofreader at the Times Call. Thank you, Karen.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I want to remind the public, we have coffee with council this Saturday at the Peaks, 1440 Kaufman Street. It will be Councilmember Christensen and myself. It should be big fun. Little known fact, little trivia here, that is where I had my first job in Longmont. My mother was the director of nurses and she thought I had too much free time, put me on the reception desk. Also, on March 1st, we have the 2016 Big Projects Open House at the Civic Center here on March 1st, which is Monday. So you should come see what we're up to. And I'm going to let the mayor do our business of the week.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. You don't want to do the business first?
Oh, no, I'm going to do it. I'll let you go first.
I can't wait.
Oh, okay. You want me to go first?
Yeah, I just, just go ahead. Turn yours on.
You guys are kidding. Oh, my gosh.
Well, my business of the week is Valley Subaru. You know how painful it is whenever you buy a new or used car and they're always trying to sell you these extended warranties and all this stuff you don't want? But I don't know, it was like the best experience I've ever had in my life when I bought my new car. They didn't try to sell me anything. They listened to me. They got them exactly when they wanted. I told them what I wanted to pay for it and I just really loved working with those guys. It was like a very pleasant experience and it's the first time I've ever had a really pleasant experience in my entire life buying a car, so. And they've actually moved across, you know, they used to be, they built a new place on Sunset and the Highway 119, they're right on the corner, so great car. Really like it, so. Also, I want to say, you know, I've been going to the Asian Pacific Cultural Festival at Silver Creek the last, I think, five years in a row. And this year, every year it's gotten bigger. That gym was just packed capacity. And it's just great to see how this community comes out and supports that and how the Silver Creek Leadership Academy, you know, does such a great job and it was a great, great time, so I enjoyed it. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. That wasn't as exciting as I hoped. Kind of a, kind of a bummer. It sounds great, but... So a couple of things. I am concerned for our, my fellow council members and myself, there is some angst in the community about composting prices and the perception that we are subsidizing composting with the, with the trash. So I think that City Line, I don't know what we need to do, but I think that I would like staff to think of a way to communicate what we did with members of our community so that they understand. I know that there was a front page article in the Times Call, but it wasn't online ever. And so I know that it might be, anyway, I think that we need to come up with something. And so I don't know if you need a consensus or what, but that is, that is called political cover and we need to communicate to the public what, what we've done and why.
So Holly Milney, Public Information for Public Works Natural Resources, is working on that. Dale and I had a conversation today about an op ed piece that, that talks about the factual pieces to this and, and that it pays you throw piece versus the composting piece and sorting all of that out. So staff is working on that and we...
Hup, hup, chop, chop. Hup, hup, chop, chop is the direction I want to give. And then the other thing is, I didn't bring it up. I voted for it. I didn't want to talk about it because I would have voted for it and didn't want to get into it. But I'm not going to advocate that we don't do it on second reading yet, but I do have some concerns about selling the cheese importers, the Chinese importers building. The thing is that when we entered, when the city entered into that, it is not an option agreement. It's not, meaning that they don't have any right to the property. And so we don't have to sell it to them and they really would like it. And I know that there's a lease that, that we somehow, city staff kind of, it's a bad lease for the city, but that cease, that lease will go away at some point and selling it for $600,000 below fair market value. If I was, if I was making the decision on my own and it was my building, I wouldn't sell it. So I think it's just something that we all need to think about before second reading. And so I didn't want to have a debate, but I at least wanted to bring it up, that there's a possibility on second reading that I'm going to suggest that we don't sell it. And I just want to kind of put that idea in people's heads so you can start thinking about whether you want to tell me to pound sand or not.
Pound sand.
So, so we're going to give, and those who want to pounce to tell me to pound sand without thinking about it, it's a $600,000 pounding of sand, which they've, and typically, and just so you know, so like we saw Mr. Chuck Novy here, or Mr. Chuck Novy here tonight, if he builds a building, it's common, if you own a building, to require people to do tenant improvements. That's what everybody does. It's what the market does. And when you come in, you do tenant improvements. And then in the end, you go away and those tenant improvements stay with the building owner. That's how the industry works. And so just because we're a government and changing the rules because, well, I just, I just, it's not what the private sector would do.
It's really late and I don't really want to discuss it much either, but I would like to point out that they have turned that building from a dead loss with nothing coming into the city to something that is enormously profitable, both to themselves and the city. So I'll be thinking about it, though.
Okay, city attorney, I mean, city manager, any comments?
So real quick, Mayor Council, I know we talked about the meeting on the first. We had two items on it. One was the mobile home update and the potential code revisions to that. We were not able to get that report finalized on time for the agenda. So we have one item on there, which is the Village at the Peaks update. And so before council said, "Why are we having a meeting for one item?", I wanted to see if you still wanted to have a meeting.
Okay. Well, since it is caucus night, I kind of think maybe we should just cancel it altogether.
I want to go to caucus now, too.
He's going to caucus for Bernie.
Donald, Donald Trump, man. I've got to stop the man. One vote, one man, one vote. Got to put my stake in there.
Okay, so we'll cancel the meeting.
Stop the training.
City, city attorney, any comments?
No comments, mayor.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.